I'd like to call to order the June 23, 2015, meeting of the Board of Education. Present is Mrs. Eileen Lou McCormick, Ms. Donna Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, myself Philip Dwyer, Mr. Convatito, Mr. Fattabean, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, and Mr. Llewellyn. If I could have you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have eliminated student reports because we've graduated them.[51.71][51.71](Laughter). So we go directly to public comment. Public comment on voting items shall take place at the time the item is up for vote. Type "public comment on discussion items" can either happen now or you can wait until the item is up for discussion and then make your comment then, but you can't do it both now and then on the same subject. The only item that I would make a comment on that's on the agenda is that the District Improvement Plan is placed on the agenda as discussion and possible action at our June 10 meeting. There was sentiment among several board members that we should take another meeting before we approved this plan or took action on this plan, and so the discussion tonight may cause us to take action on it, or based on the comments that people made at the June 10 meeting may cause us to postpone it to a next meeting. In anticipation of that and other matters, a meeting has been called for July 9 to deal with any items that are not able to be dealt with at tonight's public meeting because it is a packed agenda. With that said, public comment. Anybody wishes to make a public comment to the Board, please step forward. State your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Sarah White. I live at 214 Wilton Road. I have students at Holland Hill; I've been an incoming third grader as well as kindergartner. I'm here tonight to urge you to put Holland Hill as first in line for school renovations. In 2010, the Board deemed Holland Hill deficient enough to be put in the five-year plan. Now that five years have passed, the school's deficiencies have greatly increased. These deficiencies have been compounded by intense overcrowding due to increased enrollment that shows no sign of stopping. I sincerely hope that the Board considers all the information given and votes for Holland Hill to be first as proposed in the most recent waterfall schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. The facilities plan is a voting item, and we're supposed to take a comment on voting items at the time it comes up for a vote, but nonetheless, I decided not to interrupt you since you were on a roll. Any other public comment that people wish to make, please come forward and state your name and address.
I wanted to comment on one of the votes on the minutes. But I'm waiting to write before.
We don't take public comment on the minutes. Any other comments that people wish to make, please come forward and state your name and address.
You're on just to attend as item 5. Item 7.
I understand that. Any other public wishes to come forward to comment to the Board?
A point of clarification, please, Mr. Chair. Is the public allowed to speak on any topic at open comment?
Our past protocols, which are clearly stated in the handbook, indicate that we do not take public comment on administrative matters like the minutes, election of officers, and things of that nature.
But I also thought that anything that was on the agenda could be discussed.
Well, I'm just following our past practice.
Well, is that in our policy?
I'm following our past practice, and that's...
But is that in our policy?
I'm following our past practice.
I think that you may then probably speak on that now if you'd like. I'd like to hear.
I understand that, but our past practice, and that's what I'm ruling on, is our past practice. Thank you very much.
I feel the Chair's ruling on the past practice.
Please do. State your appeal.
I don't think anything in our bylaws, our bylaws...
Which I'll try and check. And now I say that the public may speak on any voting item. It's a voting item, so I interpret that to be that they can speak on a voting item. I don't know where the basis came from to segregate some types of voting items and other types of voting items in which we'll accept public comment. It's not in our bylaws as I read them.
And my ruling is based on past practice that existed well before when I was on the Board and that existed before probably Mr. Fattabean was on the Board, but that's my ruling. Mr. Fattabean has challenged it. Mr. Fattabean, have you expressed your viewpoint on that?
The only viewpoint is whether it is or is not past practice, the bylaws would supersede past practice if the past practice is in violation of the bylaws. So the bylaws is the controlling document.
Well, the ruling of the Chair on this matter is the ruling of the Chair.
Right.
And the Board clearly has the right to change past practice by overruling the ruling of the Chair, which you have asked to do.
Right. We're not, we're just overruling the Board's, the Chair's rule.
Yes, correct. Any other further discussion on that question? And the question before us is whether the Chair is, whether you want to support the Chair's ruling that administrative matters by past practice, whether it's minutes or officer elections and things of that matter, remain not open to public comment. Does that express your viewpoint, Mr. Fattabean, what you're challenging?
Yeah, it's just the basis on what the, yeah, it's basically, the ruling itself is being challenged.
Yes.
Not necessarily the rationale behind it. The rationale may persuade a member of the Board to vote one way or another to overrule.
Correct. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, did you have a question on the question for us?
Just a quick question, because I too respect the idea of past practice. I also know that, of course, it was in place and we were adhering to it prior to that bylaw change, and I have to admit, I do not have my bylaws with me. If anybody, if we're going to make a decision based on a bylaw, I'd want, yeah.[417.81][417.81](Laughter).
Is this a question that you would like to recess on so that we could take the time to look at the bylaws and read the section of the bylaws that you have?
Well, I believe Ms. Carnell had a follow-up.
Is that what you wish, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
May I?
Please.
Oh, okay. In follow-up, I believe when we voted to change the bylaws, past practice should be null and void, and we should be going forward. You're the one that, let's just say, certain people on the Board made the motion and passed it to change the bylaws, so I'm not sure how you can count past practice.
A change of one bylaw does not eliminate all past practices of this Board.
Absolutely, but it's this bylaw that we're talking about.
Any further discussion, or do you wish to wait until we get to that section of the bylaw that, Mr. Convatito?
Just as a point of clarification, Section 6 Public Comment, 8560, "Public comment on agenda items as a means of encouraging public participation during board meetings to chair cell solicit comments from public with regard to agenda items as proposed or amended that the Board will be discussing and/or will be acting upon by vote. The Chairman may limit public contact, comment in any manner appropriate to the orderly and efficient conduct of board meetings. The following parameters will pertain to public comment. Up to three minutes may be allotted to each speaker. The Chair may modify this limitation at the beginning of a meeting if the number of persons wishing to speak makes it impossible to do so. Public comment on non-voting items can be taken either at the beginning..." Non-voting items, so wouldn't, that wouldn't pertain, pertain. So this is a voting item, there is no omission in the bylaws, there is just a past practice.
And so the Chair may limit public comment for the efficient operation of meetings, and I presume the Chair has implemented the no comment on officers, no comment on minutes as part of that. But again, it's up to the Board to decide what they wish to do. But having said that, it's a voting item, so you would have to wait until the minutes come up for vote. Yeah. Is there any further discussion that the Board wishes to have on this topic before we vote?
Yes. Can you explain why you choose to do this, to stop someone from the public to vote or make a comment about the minutes? He's not being disruptive. I think he said something about disruptive for a time issue.
No, for the efficient management of the meeting.
Efficient management, thank you.
I am implementing past practice that Board Chairs, well before my time, have thought was helpful to the efficient operation of the meeting, so I'm simply implementing past practice.
We've spent more time discussing this than he could have spent his three minutes.
We could have spent this time talking about any number of items, yes. Any further discussion on this before we take a vote? Yeah, please. Mr. Fattabean.
There's one sentence there in Section 6A2. It's the last sentence, which may be determinative. "Public comment on voting items will take place at the time of the item is on the meeting agenda following board discussion and prior to when the vote is taken." So the first sentence is not completely determinative. That last sentence, if read literally, is mandatory, in the sense it will take place. Public comment on voting items will take place at the time of the item is on the meeting agenda. So I would argue again that there's no distinction on voting items and which ones require or should have public comment in the bylaws. So a literal reading of the bylaws, in my opinion, requires public comment to be taken on voting items and makes no distinction on the nature of that voting item.
And in past practice, this Board has made that distinction, and that's all I'm implementing. The Board is free to change past practice by... ...overruling the Chair for tonight, and then at the next bylaw change revise the bylaw to be clearer so that past practice is changed. Just like past practice changed relative to, it was past practice relative to some issues that we have now made bylaw, the past practice can be changed. But for tonight, the past practice can be changed by overruling the Chair.
A point of order. It's not a question whether any past practice is being changed. The only question or motion to appeal is the ruling of the Chair.
Yes, correct. I've made a ruling.
It has nothing to do with...
So the only way to overturn that ruling is to vote to overturn it.
Right.
Which then effectively changes past practice.
Not necessarily. It just affects the ruling of the Chair.
Correct. Can we wrap this coming up so we can move on to the regular agenda?
Sorry. I would disagree with Mr. Fattabean that if you change past practice, then you are changing past practice, and this sitting nine-member Board for the past almost two years has never requested that the Chair take public comment before our votes on the minutes. We have never done that. This is inconsistent with that. I am not saying that that's not, that, and we obviously have a member of the public who wishes to do so, but in terms of, I would not expect our Chair to change a past practice because he felt so. It's our vote will in effect change that past practice and indicate a new path. I mean, we're saying we don't respect the past practice anymore. We're saying we want it changed. I don't think it's right to do it for just one member of the public who happens to speak up now. We're saying that for the future, that past practice should be null and void, that we wish to change our practice. So I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm disagreeing with Mr. Fattabean's contention that if we did so today and overruled the ruling of the Chair, that that doesn't mean we're not changing it for the future. Why would we allow it for just this one member of the public and not for future members of the public who wish to comment on administrative matters? So I just, yeah.
I, the motion is not to change practice.
The motion is to overrule the ruling of the Chair. The ruling of the Chair, correct.
The ruling of the Chair was based on his position of past practice. My counterargument is what's in the bylaws and a literal reading of the bylaws. That, it has, it is not, we're not, the motion is not a motion to change any past practice. The motion is to change, is to appeal the ruling of the Chair. His rationale is based on past practice, but that doesn't change anything.
Yes, I think we're repeating the same arguments over, is that a fair statement to make, that we are repeating the same arguments on two sides of the question?
I'm not, I guess I'm confused because we read the bylaws, and it clearly says that the public can make a comment on any voting issue. So doesn't that supersede what the Chairman rules? You're one person on a Board of nine with bylaws that we've all spent time voting on and discussing.
And that would assume that the sentence that is in there that says the Chair may manage the public comment for the efficient and orderly operation of the meeting, that past Chairs have frequently, have consistently said that on administrative matters, we don't take public comment, so all I'm doing is implementing past practice from that perspective. The Board can clearly disagree with me on that use of that sentence, but that's the sentence. Again, can we, do we have any new arguments that wish to be made, Mrs. Lou McCormick?
And I do want to make note that the premise of your ruling is based upon efficiency and orderly meeting, and really, if he had been allowed to come up and speak, we would have had an efficient and orderly meeting. However, your motion has created a lack of order and inefficiency.
Well, actually, it's Mr. Fattabean's motion, but, yes. Is there any further argument? Does everybody understand that the motion that says yes overturns the ruling of the Chair, a no vote sustains the ruling of the Chair? People understand that? A yes vote overrules the ruling of the Chair, a no vote sustains the ruling of the Chair? Mr. Convatito, do you have a question?
Yeah, through the Chair to Mr. Fattabean. Procedurally, okay, is even the ruling of the Chair appropriate because it's not timely, because it's not time for public comment on the minutes, because it's a voting item?[970.82][970.82](Laughter).
I have comment on that.
So, Mr. Reber, you have started a conversation among us because you wanted to speak out of order, if you will. Are you willing to wait for the time of the minutes, and then I make the appropriate ruling from my perspective at that time, and then we, then we vote at that time?
I have comment on that if I may.
I'm trying to get Mr. Convatito's question to Mr. Fattabean answered.
Can you repeat the question, because I totally missed it.
Mr. Convatito?
With all due respect to the public, it wasn't, if we did take public comment on minutes because it's a voting item, it wouldn't come till later in the agenda, at the time that the minutes were brought up. So we're now having a discussion that's untimely because it's, as some people would say, not ripe for adjudication because it's not before the Board. It's not the right time to speak.
You had the question, Mr. Fattabean. That sounds logical to me. What's your viewpoint?
I would, I get, depends on the precise ruling of the Chair. If the ruling of the Chair, it depends on the precise ruling of the Chair. If the ruling of the Chair in essence is that this member of the public can't speak...
The ruling of the Chair is, this is an untimely request because the item is not coming up for vote, okay?
That's a different one.
Does that, does that help clarify it so that we can move on?
But I have a...
Mr. Fattabean.
I would say that if that is the ruling of the Chair now, in other words, my belief was the ruling of the Chair was that the member of the public could not speak at any time, and I was opposed to that. Now, I understand Mr. Convatito's rationale in that any ruling would be proper or under our bylaws, it would have to be, take place, the member had to speak at the time it was on the agenda, and if that was the Chair's ruling, then I would agree with that. But the ruling was that the member could not speak, I would disagree with that.
Okay, so what do you wish to do at this precise moment?
Or not member, but the member of the public.
Shall we move on, or shall we?
I would think procedurally, move on to the time when the ruling of the, I would, I would...
Yes, we'll move on. Thank you.
I have one comment, though, so I tried to make, no, not moving on because I had a comment prior to...
We are moving on because we are now on to the final comment and then presentation.
But we're not on it yet. I'd like to make one add-on comment to that, and the reason I'm going to make it is because based on precedents, you've always allowed individuals of the public to make a choice as to whether they speak at the beginning or when the topic comes up. And that's gone on for the last months.
We will have that debate in the minutes.
And therefore, I think he has every right to be able to make a statement early on as we have in prior instances.
I was just, before Mrs. Lou McCormick had said what she said, I have paid close attention to the laws of order.
Again, state your name and, again, state your name and address.
Kelly Jacobson, Fairfield resident. I believe every meeting that I've been to, at the beginning of each meeting, you say you're open to public comment, either at the beginning of the meeting or at the time of the voting item, either one. And I believe when you voted for change in bylaws before, you decided to implement that change to make it more favorable to the public for people that couldn't stay to the end of voting items. So I believe there's an error here in what you're saying.
Okay, thank you. Any other further comment that people wish to make on items? If not, then presentations. Mr. Mark Donald, Jessica Gerber, Mrs. Gerber is the liaison to the Fairfield-Ludlow High School Building Committee. Do you wish to make any comments prior to the Chair of the Building Committee giving us an update?
Just that I had asked Mr. Donald to come to our meeting since we will not be having another regular meeting till the end of August. I just thought there may be some meetings that take place over the summer, that, you know, we should have some information from Mr. Donald now, prior to any meetings that may take place related to the Ludlow Building Committee over the summer before our meeting at the end of August.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that in all likelihood, there will be public discussion of the construction at other meetings while we are not in session, so thank you for coming and giving us an update as of today, which is no guarantee that the update that you give to some Board in the middle of the summer might change because life changes. Please proceed.
That it does, and I apologize for not getting this document out early. If I may pass out a document regarding our executive summary, as it were, two weeks ago.
Thank you very much.
No, no. I know the document.
Okay, so essentially, this is an executive summary that we've begun presenting at each Building Committee meeting, and in regards to the schedule, the overall milestones achieved, some issues either encountered within the last month or two, as well as potential for roadblocks ahead. Currently, just as an overall summary, we are on schedule to complete the roof, classroom addition, as well as the cafeteria by the beginning of school in September. It is a tight schedule. The crew will be working six and sometimes seven days a week in order to complete it. Most likely, the roof will be done, you'll see a date on here, but the roof will be complete by September 2, but more than likely, pending, we'll just pray for rain on Sundays only. It should be done hopefully by the first week in August, so the roofing part will be complete. And then the cafeteria and classroom additions will be going close to the end with, and also with respect to the teachers and counselors who will be coming into the building prior, there will be accommodations made. Additionally, the team, as well as Mr. Hatsus, has been working together for any contingency plans, should they arise, the cafeteria being the most easily accommodated. However, the cafeteria is also the most straightforward in terms of finalizing construction and individual issues. But barring any unforeseen situations, the construction should be completed on time for Phases 1 and 2, which, as a reminder, Phase 1 is the roof, Phase 2 is the classroom and cafeteria addition. The windows part of it, we are still going back and forth with EPA, which seems to be the ongoing issue with many projects like this, and I believe, you know, if we need more information on that, Mr. Morbido can add to that, but at last report, the EPA had requested further clarification, and our consultants had responded. Are there any questions? Do we want to review the document?
Questions from the Board, Mr. Llewellyn.
Thank you for that update. So you said, just hopefully it doesn't rain on Sundays, so they're working six days, only rains on Sundays, sorry. Thank you for that correction. So does that mean they're working six-day weeks?
Yes.
And was that part of our base bid, or is that going to cost the District extra to kind of get done on schedule?
No, it's included either within the allowances as part of the construction budget or the construction manager contingency. Also, you'll note that there's almost, there's about $388,000 in owner contingency as well to cover some of those costs.
Okay, so, and where are we now versus, you were here several months ago, where are we on, in terms of budget? Are we in the exact same spot? Have we slipped a little? Has the contingency shrunk? Have we put in extra money?
We, no, we haven't put in any extra money. We're pretty much on target to complete Phases 1 and 2, and we haven't added any costs for Phase 3, which is the windows. We have the design, the architects have done the design drawings, as well as the environmental consultants are continuing their work with the EPA in order to get us an abatement plan.
Okay, so have we, there was going to be leftover funds that would be put toward the windows last time we spoke? Has that number changed?
That, it has essentially shrunk there. It would be within the contingency. There's not going to be enough really to begin the construction on the windows, even if we were to not dip into the contingency at all, just, we wouldn't be able to do any of the abatement without approaching the other, the town boards for more funding.
Okay, no, I apologize, because I wasn't, based on the agenda, I didn't know what we were actually discussing because the agenda didn't say.
Sure, no worries.
So I didn't have time to go back and look. What was that contingency, or what was that leftover piece before that could have gone to windows shrunk to or from?
If I remember correctly, it was $25,000. It wasn't much, yeah, it was essentially to complete whatever testing needed to be done.
Okay, so our, whatever that left, basically, we're in the same place financially as we were several months ago.
Right.
Okay, and then in terms of what the EPA studies have done, is there anything the Board needs to be concerned about? Is there any preliminary information that...
No, really, it's just a matter of what the EPA will accept in terms of our abatement plan. There's some obviously very cost-intensive issues, which our team is fighting, and it just depends on what they will accept at the end of the day in terms of our abatement plan. We're hoping that encapsulation is accepted in most areas, particularly in any structural areas, and it really just, it's, we send them a response, we wait for them to respond, then we send them a response, and we're just kind of playing tennis that way. And we're dependent on them and their final answer. And then once it goes to local review, hopefully we can get a final budget number and then approach the town boards for money.
And thank you very much for the presentation. It's good to know it's going to be done on time.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Llewellyn? Any other questions from the Board on the Fairfield-Ludlow High School building project? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Just one quick question. Where you are in terms of Phase 1 and Phase 2, are any additional change orders likely at this point?
We don't anticipate any major ones. The, some of the existing concerns are, now that the exterior is encapsulated, excuse me, is enclosed, is a much better word than encapsulated. The unknowns would be in the existing systems and mechanicals, and they, I think they completed the enclosure a week and change ago, and the team hasn't approached me for any emergency issues, so we don't anticipate any major ones. We do have hopefully sufficient money in the contingency, because if we don't, then we can't complete the project. But the team, the construction manager thinks that we have money in the contingency to complete Phases 1 and 2, and that's in addition to anticipating the potential to go to seven days a week and the escalation in those costs for overtime, et cetera.
Mr. Convatito?
Can you just quickly clarify for me the difference between the construction manager's contingency and the owner's contingency?
The construction manager's contingency would be essentially things within their control and within the scope of the contractors and the change orders they need to be made under that piece of it, and the owner's contingency is based on the design and unforeseen things like the majority of the change orders to date that you see were involving in-ground issues that were not on the original drawings.
So if I look on your left-hand column when it says potential change orders, there's a door hardware for $6,000, is that an owner's contingency or construction manager's contingency?
That is an owner's contingency, because that was based on the design.
Anything further, Mr. Convatito? Ms. Carnell?
Hi, how are you tonight? In terms of the potential change orders...
In terms of the potential change orders, I'm just curious what hardware, that is a change order, that's $6,000?
Those were the emergency exit handles and, oh, I don't recall, I don't recall the specifics off the top of my head, but it basically encountered any door, egress door and the change that would, that would meet code, as well as fit the appropriate door.
Wouldn't emergency door handles be in the original plans?
They were, and I don't recall exactly why they didn't fit. Mr. Morbido, do you recall?
Good evening, Sal Morbido, Manager of Construction, Security and Safety. Some, I believe, Mr. Donald is partially correct, that some of the hardware is owner's contingency and some of it is CM contingency. There were some changes to hardware to accommodate Ludlow being a polling place. Some of the hardware had to be changed, believe it or not, to accommodate voting. And I would have to get into very specifics about how doors lock and unlock to allow the public into a certain space while not allowing them into other spaces. Some of it was keying revisions, and some of it was security upgrades for different types of door handles. Again, I would have to get you some diagrams to explain what that's about.
So, now I'm even more confused. When they went into the plans, Ludlow's always been a voting school, so wasn't that taken into consideration?
Not that location. The, the, straight answer was probably no.
And it probably should've been? I mean, if it's been a voting school?
That's, that's why part of this is owner's contingency and part of it is CM contingency.
And then, you mentioned about the keys. But in our budget, we passed $45,000 for keys. Why would it be on here as well?
These are keys for the construction, the new doors. We're not rekeying, what's in our operating budget is for rekeying the existing building. It is not for keys for the construction.
But I thought the whole point of the keys was to have a uniform key?
Yes.
And not have different keys? If I understood correctly?
Correct.
But then, here you're saying we're putting in different keys into the new addition?
No, it's keying arrangements. So, we're making sure that the appropriate doors are keyed in the appropriate manner. So, it also goes to the function of the hardware. Certain, there are certain types of hardware, I can get into different classifications of hardwares. There's a function called the classroom function. It locks in a certain method. There's another one that's called the storage function, so on and so forth. So, some of the revisions was to make sure that we had the correct function for the correct purpose for the use of the space. So, part of that change order is for that.
Thank you.
And it's, it's a normal, it's not an unusual change order for the scope of this project to have hardware revisions.
Right. No, it's just that the keys were voted on in the operating. That's why I just wanted some clarity.
Right, we'll have the correct keyway, we'll order the correct keyway. They know where we are going, gave them those directions. So, what they're buying as a brand-new door handle or panic bar, the keyway, the type of key that goes in it, will be the appropriate key that will match our final solution on the whole building that.
Okay.
Our operating budget will be paying for the rekeying of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is it fair to say that the keys for the existing building are appropriately carried in our operating budget, and the keys for the new building are appropriately covered in the project budget?
That is correct.
And eventually, all of the keys will be master keyed to the same keying system?
Correct.
Any other questions from the Board? A couple of questions, if I could. The windows are still part of the ed specs. And it's my understanding that that allows the expenses that have already been spent on doing certain planning and specification and bidding and all that, then will allow it to be included with the state reimbursement formulas. Am I understanding this correctly?
That is my understanding.
And that at some point over the summer, do you anticipate revisiting a funding request to the town boards? Or is that something that will not take place until later in the fall?
Again, we're still kind of dependent on EPA, and then, once EPA comes back to the team with a plan, we have to come up with a plan of abatement. So, I would think early fall would be ambitious and appropriate.
Is more likely.
Yes.
Okay. Can I ask if the Building Committee is assuming that one of their charges is to replace the windows, and therefore, they will be going and asking for more money? And of course, it's up to the town to decide whether they wish to do that or not. Is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement.
Okay.
We've had several discussions with the First Selectmen and presentations with the Board of Selectmen.
And so, that, those funds will only be made available if you march through the requests of the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance and RTM, as is we have fondly become?
Yes, I've got both the RTM and the Town of Finance Chair abreast of the status.
Any other questions from the Board? Mr. Llewellyn?
Actually, I have a question based on the question and response I just heard. You had mentioned that the windows are still part of the ed specs. Could someone please remind us of the modification to the ed specs we made several months ago as related to the windows? I thought the windows were removed from the ed specs so that we could stay on budget and then go back to the town for more money.
I forget the exact verbiage, but I believe it was to do the windows as funding permit, permitted.
He's adding that phrase.
As funding, so they're still technically part of the ed specs, even though they were removed from the ed specs?
I'm not exactly sure how much, but there was a, it wasn't a buck ninety-five that they spent in doing the planning. And if we remove them completely from the ed specs, none of those expenses would be reimbursable. And so, it made sense to keep them in the ed specs as funding permitted.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Any other final questions from the Board? Hearing none, thank you very much for visiting us. On to Item 5A, approval of the Board of Education Handbook as distributed in the June 5th, 2015 Friday Packet, that the Board of Education approved. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the Board of Education Handbook as revised May 7th, 2015. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly. Mrs. Gerber. As you know, this item, if you don't mind if I make a comment and then go to you?
Please.
This item was in discussion at our couple of meetings ago. Revisions were made based on the discussion, primarily with an editorial comment that needed to be corrected. And then, also, Mr. Fattabene's correction that the verbiage of one particular section needed to conform more closely to the actual bylaw written, which I believe now it does. Of course, that's subject to debate. But again, the handbook is to represent the changes that the Board made between the time we last approved the handbook and today. And yes, I know that we've had several debates on different subject matters, but the handbook is designed to say what is, not necessarily what should be. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, you made the motion, so do you have any comments you wish to make?
No, I was only gonna repeat the point that you just said, which is the idea that when this was in policy, we were very, and thus, all of the careful citing within the handbook, so that the source of every bit of direction, you know, obviously, it's meant to be a tool, especially for new Board members, although quite frankly, as I reviewed it again, it was a good reminder from acronyms to other matters of practice. But none of it was supposed to be directive in nature. It was all, this is what is currently going on, which was very much the thrust of the Policy Committee discussion when it had been with us three years, three or so years ago. So, I don't know if the, that, if anything were ever perceived differently, that that would obviously be a good point to bring up now.
Mrs. Gerber, do you have any comments as the secondor?
Just that, you know, I support the motion. This just updates what we already had in the original handbook, which I supported three years ago when we first approved it.
Questions or comments from the Board? Perhaps, Mr. Fattabene, do you want to start as to whether the item on page 17 reflects what the intent of your question was or not?
Yeah, no, that's, I just want to get a procedible matter, and that is what version of the handbook, is there a cover page that says what the version is on?
Yeah, revised May 7.
All right, so that's the one, May 7.
Yes, correct.
You mentioned a date in June, and I guess that was confusing me. It was handed out in June, but revised, the date on the document says revised May 7.
Correct, correct.
All right, I just want to make sure I had the right document.
Let me clarify with our administrative assistant who has managed this. Correct, this is the latest version, May 7th, 2015.
All right, that's why I just, I just wanted to make sure it was, I was looking at the right one. Yeah, I think I had, I had made a suggestion before in which you had incorporated a substantial portion of her, and I thank you for that, except you also maintained some things that I would've deleted. And specifically, that is on page 17, paragraph numbered E. If you go to the last seven lines.
Seven, seven lines from the bottom?
From the bottom. The sentence starting with "The essence of these Board practices is threefold." Basically, we, the beginning of that just indicates what the bylaws say. And I think when you get into indicating, indicating what the essence of these practices is, it's more subjective, and that other Board members may not necessarily agree with those, that's the rationale as to why those, that Board policy or that Board bylaw exists. So, in other words, that's more subjective and not, I would just stick with the statement of what the bylaws say, since that was a very controversial bylaw, and not go into necessarily stating one view's rationale as to why that is done. So, I would move to strike.
Before you, oh, no, go ahead, make your motion. I'm sorry.
To strike the last sentence indicating "The essence of these Board practices is threefold." A, to recognize that individual Board members may not give direction to the superintendent, only the Board can, only the full Board can. B, to ensure information requests do not put an undue burden on the staff. And C, to engage Board of Education members to prepare their questions or requests for additional information in advance to allow adequate time for staff to gather the requested information. Those are all partially true, but maybe others and...
Okay, so that's the motion. Let me get a second so we can, right? You've made the motion, Mr. Llewellyn, so make your argument on the motion, and then I'll go to Mr. Llewellyn.
I think that just summarizes what some positions may be as to why those practices are. There may be other positions. And I just don't think that it's a, because it's somewhat more subjective or selectively indicating what the rationale is, each Board member had their own rationale. Some were, some were this, some were others maybe. So, I just don't think that more subjective statement should be in the handbook and just limit the handbook to factual statements and not interpretive statements. So, that's why I, when I gave my original proposal, it was tracking more the bylaw language specifically and not getting into interpreting that bylaw language. Leave that for another day. In other words, it can be interpreted different ways depending on the time and the individual.
Mr. Llewellyn, you seconded the motion?
I completely agree. I think that we should leave the editorial out and stick with what the bylaws are, because whomever drafted this particular sentence feels this way right now, that may not be what should be here three years from now. So, if we stick with what the facts are, we're in a safer place.
So, the Board members understand, I, I did not consider it my function to change what a prior Board had voted nine to zero as saying, "We accept these statements." So, that statement was approved the last time this Board took action on it on a unanimous basis. There's no reason why this Board can't change anything here, but I thought that that should be a change made by the entire Board through an amendment motion, not simply because one Board member suggested it and I said, "Well, I agree with that, so I'll eliminate it." So, that's why it didn't come out, because I thought that was a full Board decision and not just one Board member.
And that's why I said whomever. I don't know who did it.
Other comments on the motion at hand, which is to strike the words "The essence of these" until you get to the requested information? So, I do believe that those words, while subjective, are appropriate because they give the intent behind the motion. Clearly, the statement that individual Board members may not give direction to the superintendent is part of state law, that the Board only acts when they're in meeting and then only by majority. So, that statement is not a subjective statement, it's actually part of state law. The intent behind the, the spirit and intent behind the bylaw change was to ensure that staff are not overburdened by requests. That's been a statement that the Board has subscribed to for a while. And certainly, we have, by past practice, encouraged Board members to always ask questions in advance and not pop them at the last minute, because that allows staff to give, do more research to make sure that they give correct and appropriate answers. So, I think those three, while they may seem subjective, the first one clearly is part of state law, and the other two are longstanding practices. So, I prefer to keep them in, but that's up to the full Board. Other comments that people, let me go to anybody else to see if other people have comments before I go back to the two of you, Mrs. Gerber.
I just want to clarify, so this language, this last sentence, the one that Mr. Fattabene wants to strike, that was in the original handbook. That was not added?
Correct.
For this handbook?
All of the black type.
That was part of the, and I actually have a copy of the original one.
Yes.
So, this was in here, and as you said, it was approved nine oh by the previous Board.
Yes.
Not to say that this Board wouldn't feel differently, but it's not language that was added since this was approved three years ago.
Correct. All of the black type existed three years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Convettito?
With no due prejudice, Mr. Fattabene, I won't be supporting the motion, because I won't be supporting the approval of the handbook in itself. I find that after three years of it, it's duplicative, it's a distraction, and we waste a great deal of Board time trying to figure out what our Board rules should be, whether dictated by bylaws and state statute.
Any other comments that Board members wish to make? Mrs. Eileen, Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I actually agree with Mr. Convettito. I think this is, I know, you don't, please sit down. I believe a lot of this is duplicative, and I believe a lot of this is leading when it's not necessarily stated overtly in the bylaw. We should be governed by our bylaws. We shouldn't have this interpretation on the side to confuse matters. You know, in particular, I could just look at the Superintendent's Report, which says, "At the conclusion of the Superintendent's Report, questions from Board members shall be related only to the topics addressed by the Superintendent, limiting Board members to question anything else within the District." And it says Board practice, it's not a bylaw. So, similar to what's going on here, this has nothing to do with what we have to do or why we should think the way we do. So, I'm not sure why we would limit and lead future Board members down this path. Everyone should have their own independent thoughts. We don't need this. I think this handbook is duplicative.
Okay, now, I think Mr. Llewellyn wanted to make a comment?
I do, thank you. So, the first one is state law, therefore, not sure we need to actually mention that. Second two are past practices, and we're finding more and more often that practices are just that, and they're not part of the bylaws. So, you know, I support striking this, but I also support, you know, doing away with the document in its entirety, because it is leading. You know, we look at a prior page, and we have the essence of things there as well. If it's not part of the bylaws, it doesn't rule.
At the risk of asking Mr. Fattabean to define the word "essence," but I'm, I'm not going to, that's a, that's a rhetorical question. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
I guess I, I find it a shame that, that people are finding it this way. I mean, if you think about the nature of what an orientation is for brand-new board members, there's a lot to be learned that isn't going to be covered by bylaws. And that was, to me, the purpose of this, was that this was meant to be a helpful tool, an educational tool, a reference tool. I mean, from all of the acronyms in the back to the summary of other practices. You know, as Mr. Dwyer has already referenced, you know, past practice can be changed, it, it helps to make for an efficient, orderly meeting. I think it's a shame to do away with the handbook, because it is meant to be a useful tool to encapsulate and pull together in one location issues of state statute, because I don't think there's a single board member who's ever come on this board that was an expert at those and could readily reference them. And this was a reference tool for that, as well as applicable bylaws, as well as, well, this is how it has been done. Not that that was binding in any way, but it set out some parameters for hopefully establishing some mutual respect in an orderly meeting. I mean, however the board votes, you know, I certainly think it was a useful tool in its time. I think it's a shame that it's viewed that way, but...
For purposes of explanation, Board of Education handbook concept came from my first attendance at a Cabe conference.
Through the chair, I didn't mean to distract the debate from Mr. Fattabean's amendment to the main motion, so if we...
Okay, fair enough, fair enough, fair point, thank you. The motion is to remove those last words, starting with "the essence of," and ending with "requested information." Any further debate on that particular question, the amendment and the amendment only? None, this is a voting item. Any member of the public wish to come forward and, and comment on the amendment and the amendment only? Seeing nobody come forward, back to the board. Do board members understand the motion that's in front of us? Yes, removes those words; no, keeps them in. Okay? All in favor of the amendment to remove those words, as I've stated, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick?
Oh, I just...
If you want to, if you want to stay there, move it so that I don't get confused late at night. Ms. Carnell, Mr. Fattabean, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed? Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, four, four, the, the amendment fails. Any other amendments that people wish to make before we vote on the main motion? Yes, Mr. Llewellyn?
I've got several. So if we move back to page seven and eight, master calendar, and I brought this up at prior meetings. I'd like to amend number two, which is February, number three, which is March, number eleven, which is November, and number twelve, which is December, to contain two meetings rather than one. So the language for each of those will read "two regular meetings are scheduled," and the rationale for that motion is...
First, you have to get a motion on the table, second it, and then, and then debate. Is there a second?
Mr. Long, could I ask a point of privilege? Could we get, could I ask that we get a sense of the body as to whether we want to move forward with this handbook before we go about amending the whole thing?
We could, but I'd love some debate on this. That's fine.
So, so let me...
The answer's a saving time.
So let me suggest that the meeting schedule by our bylaw is set between the superintendent and the chairman of the board.
I'm going to withdraw my amendment until we get a sense of the body, though, and then I'll...
And so therefore, what we did three years ago when we voted this is that we were not using the handbook as a means of changing things, we were using the handbook to document things. And if we wish to make changes, then the appropriate way to do that is through bylaws discussion. So you've withdrawn your motion?
Nobody seconded it.
Nobody seconded it, so that it's not before the body. So perhaps having a discussion on, further discussion on Mr. Convetito's point where he said he's not sure that we need this, and Mrs. Maxon Cannelly felt that it should continue. Perhaps having a discussion on that point would define whether we're, we have to make any of the changes. And I'll say that, again, to save time...
I'm going to be very brief on this.
But if I can, a motion is on the table, and therefore, a four, four vote would defeat the motion, and the document would not be, it would be turned down. Okay, Mr. Convetito?
Having lived with this document going over three years now, and having spent numerous hours in board time and public time amending it and reviewing it, and having never once referred to it except when it's being amended and reviewed, as a board member, I find it less than adequate as a guide, because I go to the primary source, whether it's the bylaws or the state statute. So I think we've wasted enough time with this. It came out at a time, and I think the intention was to try and get the board to go in one direction or one way, and after three years, it's been my conclusion that you're never going to get nine people to go in the same direction, no matter how many manuals and documents you put out. And I think we wasted a great deal of board time and the public's time with this document, and I'd just like to see it go away.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, I think you argued the opposite point, but before I go back to you, is there anybody else that wishes to make a comment? Mr. Fattabean?
Well, as I recollect, as we originally was this, this, this came into existence, I believe, a couple of years ago. And yet, I, my belief that...
Yeah, two thousand and twelve.
Right. And at the time, the debate was whether or not, as I recollect, whether the board should actually approve this document, or whether this is just a document that's, that's nice, but the board doesn't have to necessarily approve it, because it's just a factual document that doesn't change anything that the board does, and it's not a fundamental document which is what's controlling by the, that the board has to be controlled by. So I, I tend to think it's a good document. I always questioned, and then I questioned, and even now I question, whether the board has to approve it or not. I mean, it's, it should be a factual handbook or guide, which doesn't change policy, so we're not voting on any changes of policy or anything changed, it's a factual document. If they're all factually accurate, the author takes responsibility of that, not the board. Why it brings in the board to take responsibility for this document, I always had a problem with, and, and that's, we're seeing the problem now. Getting the board to agree on certain interpretations is problematic. But the board, you know, there are facts, and the facts are what the facts are, so as long as you stick to the facts within the document, you're relatively safe, or the author's relatively safe. It doesn't necessarily have to be approved by the board, in my opinion, if there is, if those facts are accurate. So I, I think it is a handy guide. I just question what the role of the board is in the guide, and whether we need a role in the guide, as long as it's a factual document. So I don't know where to go with this, then, other than for the author to just sign it and say, "This is my guide to the Fairfield Public Schools."
I'm, I'm sure it would be popular if the chair of the board just said, "This is my guide," and, and issued it, but I, I got a feeling a couple of you might object to that. I do think it is a helpful guide. I, I have used it in orientations, I have used it with potential candidates, and I think it is helpful to the public, who sometimes gets confused as to our operating procedures and, and when do we do this and when do we do that. And it's a collection of those, so that they don't have to hunt them down through a policy booklet that is about four inches thick, through bylaws that they have to find on the website, through state law that is in Mooney's book that is, again, also this thick. And so I think it's, it's a helpful compilation of existing practice. But clearly, if the board is not in favor of continuing it, although I gave birth to this idea, you know, it's, I manage at the pleasure of the board. So it's up to the board to decide whether they want to continue issuing this handbook. I believe it should be issued. Before I go back on your, anybody else wish to make a comment on that point, whether we need to keep it or not? If not, Mr. Fattabean, you have the last word?
Well, I don't, I don't know, we'll see. But I, I agree it's a handy guide, and I agree with the chair of that. I guess the question, what I would propose, then, maybe, is that where you get into trouble is when you deviate from the actual clear statement of fact, and you have some interpretive language in there, or some belief as to what's going on with the district and so forth. So maybe we can, it'd be an effort to have a compilation of factual data with a clear reference to the underlying document and not deviate from that. And then it will be a useful guide. Maybe we can have a crack at this and saying, you know, we're going to, we're going to expunge or delete all the sort of subjective or interpretive elements, and just have a reference document that identifies the source and the reference, and almost uses verbatim what that reference is, as a guide for the public to go look up and make their own opinion, should they decide to go and, and look at that reference and interpret it. But, so I do think, I agree with the chair in the sense it's a handy and useful document, hopefully for the public, but I don't know whether we have to take ownership of it, and I don't know whether, or I think it probably should be reformatted to expunge any sort of interpretive information as to what the source documents mean. And in that case, and I would support it if that were done, so maybe...
So perhaps one way to implement that could be that each of us have our own viewpoint as to what is a subjective sentence of black type that was in the prior document. And perhaps we should postpone this to another meeting and allow each board member to say, "I think these sentences should be struck for the purposes of Mr. Fattabean saying that they're, they're interpretive rather than factual based." At the moment, we have a main motion on the floor that we would have to act on, so we can either act on that, vote the handbook down, and it's not revised, or we can vote to postpone, or we can vote to do something else. Mrs. Eileen Lou McCormick, you raised your hand.
Just to follow up on the thought that Mr. Fattabean threw out, I would, I would suggest that we pretty much just do away with this, and I like the idea of almost creating an index by topic, and make reference, if we want to talk about a particular topic, make reference that this is in bylaw, blah, 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 blah. If you want to know this, this is in statute, blah, 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 blah. We don't need to select words. I find that sometimes selective pulling of words and compilation of words leads to different meanings, as we all know. So therefore, I would say the purest way, if we want a simple guide, is to go by topic, create an index of reference, of where to go to get the actual fact to read, and just have an index of topics and, and the source from where you can draw from. And we just do away with this. And we don't have a handbook, we just have a, you know, a handy reference.
It's a viewpoint. Mr. Convetito?
Make a motion to send the Fairfield Public Schools Board of Education handbook back to policy and have it resolved in committee.
Let the public recognize that Mrs. Maxon Cannelly has smiled enthusiastically at that motion. Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Fattabean?
To speak to the motion, it was born out of the Policy Committee. The revision should be made in the Policy Committee and then come back to the board, if the board, in fact, is going to improve it, or if the Policy Committee has a better way of handling the issues within the handbook. But to sit here and debate line by line, I, I think we're just going nowhere.
I, I don't disagree with that. I, I would, as direction, suggest that the Policy Committee has their hands full with legally required policies that they have to adapt, and that this should fall into line with their work as the chair determines its best. You know, I don't think it should take precedence over any other matter that you have. Mr. Llewellyn?
I think we're going to be back at the exact same spot next time this comes back out. I like the idea that we get an index, because an index is infinitely more efficient. So I would prefer to vote the document, as it's been bantered around for a while, and then if we decide to do an index, or if this becomes an administrative document that they use or, or use to add guidance, that's fine, but I don't think it should be a board document as it sits this way.
So that's your argument, to vote against the amendment?
Correct, vote against the amendment.
I have no objection to the amendment at all, I, as, because I do believe the document has some value, and so therefore, I, I agree with the motion to refer it to Policy Committee. Other comments that people wish to make on the motion to refer to Policy Committee? Other comments that people wish to make? We have a separate motion on that. Any member of the public wish to comment on the motion to refer this document to the Policy Committee? Seeing no one coming forward, back to the board for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand with an "aye." Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Convetito, Mr. Fattabean, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly with a "no," Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, the motion passes five, two, three. And again, for the board members, the chair of the Policy Committee will determine when this can come up on the agenda, based on the other matters that need to be addressed to comply with state law and other things. Thank you. Onto item five B. Discussion and possible action on the district improvement plan dated June twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen. I'll ask the board, based on their comments on June tenth, whether they would like to have the discussion first, before we put the formal motion on the table, because if there's a sentiment to postpone action on this, then we would just end up, you know, postponing a motion, so it might make sense to just postpone the subject. Does that seem like an appropriate way to do it, to save some time? With unanimous consent, we will proceed with discussion, and during discussion, if members of the public wish to make comment, at some point after the board has discussion, I'll call on the members of the public.
Sorry, point of, point of order here, point of procedure, I guess. So it's officially off for a vote now, it's just into discussion mode?
It says possible action, and so it might be appropriate to vote to postpone it, just so that it's clear.
That was just not clear, that's why I asked.
Yeah, and so after we have discussion, if that's the sentiment of the board, then we'll either do a motion to postpone, or we'll, or we'll put forth the recommended motion, one of those two. So with that in mind, do board members wish to make, no, wait a second. There were several changes made to the document, and I'll ask Mrs. Parks to, as briefly as possible, walk through the changes and the memo and whatever else she deems appropriate, and to ask whatever staff members might be appropriate to come forward to inform the board. Mrs. Dwyer?
Thank you, Mrs. Dwyer. You all received a memo along with a revised copy of the district improvement plan. So I'll walk you through the, the plan first, with all of the changes that were made since you saw it the last time at a meeting. And I'll try to remember where the suggested changes came from, to remind you. And the memo that you received addresses all of the changes that were recommended that were not put into the document with an explanation of why. So let me walk through the plan first. I'll tell you by page number. So the first changes that were made are on page four. If you recall, there was text in the original plan that explained some of the timeframes around how this was developed. So there were a lot of comments on that about different time periods that it was, was in an advisory committee to develop the goals and the mission, and then it went to Policy Committee. So instead of creating a long text document, we created a timeline. So that's where those changes... So that's where those changes came from. Mrs. Brown diligently checked the minutes of many meetings, to make sure those dates were accurate. Then if the next change, I believe, is on page...
Should we ask questions as you go along, or should we wait?
What's your preference?
Makes no difference to me, whatever your preference is.
My only question there is, you said there were whole sections that were deleted.
Excuse me?
You said this were, sections were deleted and this was added? Is that what you said? I'm sorry. The timeline.
No, I think...
You said there was pros, I thought.
Yeah. I think it was in the introduction, on page three, that there was a lot of comment on the different phases, so actually, there was no text deleted, we just added the timeline.
Got it.
Sorry.
I'm trying to clarify.
Yes, you're right about that, I apologize. And then if we go to page nine, part three at the bottom, the review process, Mr. Fattabean graciously gave us text at the last meeting of language he wanted inserted. We inserted, we didn't use it all as it was, but we inserted it where we felt it was appropriate in the paragraph.
I noticed that.
I'm sure you did. So you should recognize some of that language. The next change is further along, on page 19. That's in the section on performance indicators and data measures. And if you look in the second row from the bottom, you'll see those changes are all in blue text. So going up, 13, 12, and 11 were inserted, they did not exist there before. Between the time that we...
11, 12, and 13.
Yeah, 11, 12, 13, sorry for going backwards. Page 19, in blue text. All of those indicators were added. There was a suggestion by several members of the community, as well as members of the Board, that we add some nationally normed tests. We had not included S-Back originally, because we weren't clear. So, and we had been engaging the high school joint leadership in a conversation pretty much all year about including PSAT as an assessment at the high school, to give us feedback. So since that time, the high school joint leadership, for a multitude of reasons, which I can get into later, decided to make PSAT in grades 10 and 11 a requirement. It gives excellent feedback, and we can talk a little bit more about the new components of the PSAT. This is the new PSAT aligned with Common Core. You can see the S-Back was added for grades three to eight, and then in grade 11, we have S-Back or SAT, and that is indicated as S-Back or SAT, because some of you may be aware, the state legislature recently voted to substitute the SAT for S-Back in grade 11 as the high school assessment. We are now waiting to find out if the federal government will accept that as part of the change in procedures by the state of Connecticut. So those were added. And then you will see on the next page, on page 20, under number 17, 19, and 20, there was a suggestion, I believe it was by a board member, and it might have also been made by a community member, I'm not clear, certain about that, but there was a discussion about the language used for describing the categories of performance in the common assessments the district uses, such as the district common writing assessment, the star reading assessments, and the eye-ready math assessments. So we changed the descriptors for performance indicators to make them aligned with the other performance descriptors, so they are at goal, and at or above goal, and at advanced for those three categories. The next changes are on page 29. I believe there was, I think Mr. Llewellyn, you had made this recommendation at the last board meeting when we discussed this. On 2-6, we had top-notch, which I think we all agreed what exactly did that mean. So we changed the language. We believe the language now actually explains in better language what we hope to make that program, in terms of a rigorous and challenging program for the students there, which is much better language, so I thank you for that, for that feedback.
Can I have a comment on that one?
Are you taking comments? Please, ask a question.
Okay. So when I was reading that, so that 2-4 and 2-6, to me, are somewhat overlapping, and I'm wondering why we can't join them into one? Because really, the use of data team results to analyze student performance, and the use of best practice models should be rolled out and used to adjust instructional practices to improve learning for all students, all the time, not really just for, you know what I'm saying? Not just for the alternative school, and the top data results shouldn't only just be used for all students and all, I mean, it seems like those two could be joined together, and both those practices should be used for the benefit of all students in all content areas. And the alternative high school program would be inclusive, because they would be part of all of the students. And that two-year timeframe could apply to everybody, as opposed to just segmenting out one area, because it seems like why that one area versus any of the other areas, don't we want to make sure that data results, analyzing student performance, and using best practice models is really rolled out and applied to all the students?
Yes, I think 2-4, using data teams and the resulting analysis of data to make adjustments in instruction, is for all content areas, all levels. I think 2-6 acknowledges that we have a lot of work to do at the alternative high school in terms of curriculum, in terms of program, not just instructional strategies. So I believe that really requires us to have a separate strategy.
But I would argue that the use of best practice models needs to be used throughout for all different, for everything, really, using best practice models, and so...
I think these are more specifically...
Can I suggest that we focus on the fact questions, because, and then once we get through all of those, we'll re, come back to the opinion as to whether this should be in here or not, because I think Mr. Llewellyn's comment was not necessarily just top-notch, but he wasn't sure either, whether the alternative high school statement should even be in here. So I think we ought to debate that, and let Mrs. Parks at least get through the fact basis of the changes.
So just so we're clear, we're not saying, at least I'm not saying that the alternative high school shouldn't have, right, improved everything, but I'm just saying that the use of best practice models, applying it only to the alternative high school seems very limiting, that should be applied to all the students as well. Like, that concept is applicable to everybody, it's not just applicable.
We'll get to that argument, but let me help her get through the, you know, just running through the changes and getting the fact questions out.
So that was page 29. The next change was on page, I believe it starts on page 34, and continues on page 35. You'll see that on the student performance indicators chart with baseline data and targets, the changes were made in red. You'll see at the bottom of page 34, because we added PSAT as an indicator, it now appears on this chart, and it's broken out by grade level and by content area. And you'll see the same thing for S-Back in grades three through eight, and for S-Back or SAT in grade 11. So that goes, those changes continue through page 36 at the very top. And then on the next page, if you flip the page, on page 37, again, you see the language change, which I mentioned previously on the performance indicator chart, that we've aligned the categories of performance, which was a request from a board member to align with the other descriptors of categories of performance, and that continues through page, through pages 42, because we did it for just common district writing assessments, for eye-ready, and for star assessments.
Do you want to do anything about the memo, or it stands as it? Do you want to do anything about the memo, or does it stand as is?
I guess I would answer questions, but it seems to stand...
Any questions on the memo? Fact-based questions, and then we can get into the opinion-based viewpoints. No fact-based questions on the memo? So why don't we start with the District Improvement Plan itself? Can I suggest about a half an hour of board discussion, and then be able to go to the public, and then come back to the Board, so that the public has a chance to weigh in before we, because if we suddenly take a motion to postpone, those members of the public who have come to talk about it, suddenly won't have an opportunity to do so. So who wishes to go first? Well, Mrs. Lou McCormick, you were beginning to make a comment, an argument on one particular issue. Do you want to continue that now, or...
Well, I think my point's been made. I think I made my argument. And I understand that you're making a particular, you want to highlight the need for the alternative school, but if you feel the need that you have to highlight the alternative school, then I think there are a list of other areas within the schools that need to be highlighted as well. So I think we either highlight them all, or we don't highlight them, because as we know, and I don't think we necessarily want to go through the specific areas again, because I've said them before, and it's incited great conversation, but there are particular areas that I think are as urgent, that we rectify, or I don't know, rectifies the right word, improve immediately. And so if we are going to go through the effort to highlight this one incident, then I think we need to go through then and highlight all of the areas within the district that we need to have, within a two-year timeframe, some dramatic improvement initiatives. Or we wrap it all into one, and make it broad, understanding that we are trying to address all the issues that are within our district, this being one of them, of course, but then we don't highlight any of them. So I find it, I guess to me, unbalanced, to highlight one, but not highlight the others, because, you know, I think there are so many issues that are out there, that you can't just pick one. There are at least, you know, I'm sure there's several others that we should be highlighting along with that one in the general school as well. Okay, so that's one point. We don't need to discuss it, or do we do want to?
Well, I think Mr. Llewellyn wishes to make a comment on that point, as would I and other board members made, so let's stay on that point before we move on to a second issue.
And to back up for a moment, a comment that I made is, I do believe that we need to provide them with a challenging and rigorous program, and we need to improve it, because the Superintendent himself pointed out that it's not up to our standards. My concern with leaving this in here is a couple of them. One is the inequity that Ms. Lou McCormick points out, but even more so, at the May 19th meeting, Ms. Parks, when you were quoted as, "Ms. Leonardi explained this in the original presentation. We were hoping to add improvements, so we may be able to attract students from other districts, since not all districts have alternative high schools, and there are certain types of students," and it goes on. Now, what I had asked for is an analysis, but what is, does it make sense? Are we in a position where we can do that? But Mr. Dwyer's comment back was, "Well, once we vote on this improvement plan, if the phrase is still in there, focus on improving the Fitzgerald campus, then effectively, the Board will have voted on this." So unfortunately, with the phrase still there, and the direct statement made by Ms. Leonardi, Ms. Parks, and affirmed by the Chair...
I would like you not to try and describe what my statement meant.
Oh, I'm actually quoting it, so I'm not describing, I'm quoting it. So that's my issue with leaving it in there, is it feels to me as though there is something else going on, because it's been stated, that is beneath the surface here, and whether or not we want to do that should be a decision of the Board, it should not be something that's embedded in a district improvement plan. So I think for that reason, and for the reason Ms. Lou McCormick stated, which is, we've got to then call out all the different groups that need improvement focused on them. I think we should strike that piece.
Do I believe that the, and then Mr. Fattabean, and then back to Mrs. Lou McCormick, do I believe that strategic plans from time to time call out specific actions, because an institution believes that that segment deserves to be held up and said, "We need to do this better"? Do I believe that the mission statement that this Board adopted, that said, "Every student shall be served to become lifelong learners," that we owe it especially to those students who may be in the alternative high school program, to make sure that they are among that every student? I don't think we can possibly have a strategic plan that just says, "Let's make everything better," because that would be too simple. I don't have a problem with highlighting certain steps, action steps, that say, "On certain matters, we need to improve this." At the time that I was commenting, it was commenting that if we leave it in, that means that we are dedicated to improving the alternative high school. That does not mean that the Board is voting to make this an alternative high school that is available to the entire country or state. If we leave it in, it's so that we state clearly, we want to do better by our students who are in the alternative high school. Mr. Fattabean, followed by Mrs. Lou McCormick, then back to Mr. Llewellyn, and then back to Mrs. Maxon Cannelly. Paul.
I just come up by saying that I think our obligation is to every student in the district...
Every district, yes.
In the district. My suggestion with that language about the alternative high school, and the thing that I found a little confusing, was that we're all talking about improving it, and why we should improve it, and that's a legitimate and reasonable thing to do. But the language says, "Create." Use best practice models to create. Now, we already have a program there, and we want to improve the program we have there, so we're not really creating something new. We're improving upon what's there. So I would suggest that that language, "Create," be changed to improve the alternative high school program, and then instead of "that," add the word "to," or say, "so that it engages." "To engage every student." I would get rid of the plural. In other words, use best practice models to delete, create, and insert "improve the alternative high school program," delete "that engages," and insert "to engage every student in challenging and rigorous program." Because that's really what you're trying to do. You're trying to take an existing program and improve upon it. You're not creating something new, and maybe that's some of the problem. You only want to improve what you have, as this is what this whole document does, improve what we have for every student in the district. And I think we have to be cautious that since the concept of opening up the alternative high school to people outside the district has been, was raised, it was never accepted by the Board that I was aware of, and it should go no further until it is accepted by the Board. And I don't think this language can be or should be interpreted to be a, to give any type of direction to serve any students other than the ones within our district. So that's basically what I would move on.
Mr. Convetito? I had recognized Mrs. Lou McCormick, so, Mrs. Lou McCormick, do you mind if Mr. Convetito steps in or not? It's fine. Mr. Convetito.
I just, the word is, "improve the alternative high school program." "So that it..." "To engage." That was my only clarification.
There may be a motion that comes to take the whole thing out, but at the moment... There may be a motion that comes to take the whole thing out, but at the moment, is there unanimous consent that those, Mr. Fattabean's language suggestion would be an acceptable language, except, to put in here in place of the current one? Yes?
I accept that, but I'd like to expand upon it. No, that's why I wanted to ask.
Okay, so first, let's, let's say that the language is now, "Improve the alternative high school program to engage every student," that that's the language that we're debating. And I think I was at Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Well, I'll let her finish the thought because it goes along.
Then to Donna.
Expand upon that. And I'm not the English major at the table, but use best practice models to create, well, to, to improve.
Yes.
Alternative high school programs with only students from our district.
Students within our district.
Whatever. It's, I've been, I've been up to thirty-six hours. You can, you can tweak that to where. We've gone in a different, I'll get back to you eventually, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
I would, I would not be in favor of that wording, because that's what the program is now, to change. So to me, it's, my objection is because I believe it's redundant. It's our alternative high school. To make it otherwise would be a budget issue, and we will, we would address it then, and we would, as to Mr. Llewellyn's point, we would expect the metrics and the data, and, and, you know, the, the plan of what it is at that time to change it from what it's, what it is. But nowhere else in here do we stipulate that it's for our school's students, so I guess I don't see the need to do it here.
Yeah, let me comment on one thing that may help you. The board currently has a policy that says students may not tuition into our school system. So the staff, unless we change that policy, could not accept students outside of residents of Fairfield. That's already by existing policy.
So then why can't we edit, just to make it clearer? And to go further, you said about in the budget, through the chair to Mrs. Maxon Cannelly. We did approve in the budget, I believe, and I don't have the budget book with me, an additional principal, I believe, for the school, if I'm correct, and really, I don't have it with me. So I think that we have allocated money to this school, and I don't believe, give me one sec. I think we've allocated money to this, and that's why I would like to have it stated or added, "It's only students from our district."
And if I may respond?
Wait a second. Before we get too far afield, Mrs. Lou McCormick, do you mind if we continue this conversation before I get back to you on the other point?
I'll defer to Mr. Llewellyn, and then I'd like to take it back, if that's okay.
Right.
Yeah, so, answer the question, and we'll go back to Mrs. Lou McCormick.
So, through the chair, in response to, um, Mrs. Cornell, I would say a few things. One, yes, you're, you're correct, there was budget money approved to change the structure of the administration at that school for the existing students who are Fairfield residents, who are part of the Fairfield School District. And again, I see no need to add, if we're going to add that wording to this, why wouldn't we be adding it all over the place to stipulate repeatedly, redundantly, and repetitively for our students, for our students? And I don't see the need for that, because it, as, as Mr. Dwyer pointed out, any possibility of any student not a Fairfield resident, it, they could not be in without a policy change, which would also come up as a budget issue. So I see no need to add that language here, unless we are looking to add it to virtually every bullet point in the district improvement plan. So that's why I'm, I agree with you, these, this is for Fairfield students only, but because of that, I would, I would not give a unanimous consent, or I would oppose the idea of, of that language change for that reason.
So, so can I go back to Mrs. Lou McCormick, that we interrupted with this conversation that lasted longer?
Oh, I said I deferred it to Mr. Llewellyn, because he had a point on this same topic.
And you're deferring to Mr. Llewellyn.
Did you have a point on this that you wanted to add? Go ahead.
Mr. Llewellyn.
So, I would like to, the point of why we would add language here is because there was an explicit statement made at two different meetings, that the purpose of 2.6 was to expand the school to attract students from other districts. So that, that's a quote, you guys are welcome to go look it up. So that's a quote that was made at the May nineteenth meeting, and at a prior meeting, it was also brought up that way. Then, the other quote is from Mr. Dwyer, "Then effectively, the board will have voted on this." So I would propose at the end, we say, "No expansion without direct board approval." I have no problem with the language, because I think we do need to improve it, but because we've had explicit statements that that's the intent, I think we need to limit that without board approval. And if people are saying it needs to come to us for budget, I'd rather be redundant here because of those quotes.
So you're relying on explicit statements, but you will not rely on explicit statements that say that, one, that's not the intent, the language was changed to show that, that, two, there's a policy that prevents it, and it couldn't be done without a budget. Those statements you don't want to rely on, but the prior statements you do want to rely on.
Two of those statements, which is the policy and the budget, existed at the time you made your statement. So no, I would prefer to have it explicitly written.
Again, you're misinterpreting my statement.
No, I'm reading your statement.
Mr. Convetito, you wanted to comment?
I think 2.6 reads fine, as Mr. Fattabean has proposed the amendment. I understand Mr. Llewellyn's point, but to his point, the language was changed when he made, when he brought the issue up. So I think the administration was responsive to it, the language was struck, they got the message, and I see no need now to sort of put the, the nail in the coffin. I think it reeks of distrust, I think the message was delivered, the message was received, and you move on.
So then, could the minutes reflect? Could the minutes reflect that you do not have the int, I'm sorry?
You're out of order.
Why am I out of order?
Because we were going around the table.
Well, he pointed at me, I'm sorry.
No, no, we were not, Mr. Convetito.
He pointed at me.
Mr. Fattabean, then Mrs. Lou McCormick, but she deferred to yourself and Donna, and then she deferred to John Llewellyn, so eventually I have to go back to Mrs. Lou McCormick, but we're going in order of the way people had raised their hands.
Okay, thank you. If, the minutes will reflect that that is, that you are saying that it would have to come back to the board for those purposes, and the minutes actually reflect that, I'm okay with that.
I think the essence of these minutes, in all likelihood, will reflect that, and if you don't think it adequately reflects it.
But I can debate minutes.
Then you can get, get them to, to do so. And I, and I, if they don't adequately reflect that sentiment of the board, I wouldn't have any problem getting them to reflect it. Now, back to Mrs. Lou McCormick, do you, or do you, I, have you deferred in total?
I think that topic has been well-covered. But back to my original.
Listen, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, did you have any final comment on that topic? If not, we'll go back to her second point.
My final comment is, I think Mr. Llewellyn put it quite well. He sees the need for this statement. I don't feel the need for the protective measures that he's had, but this bullet point is needed. The district made its determination that this should be included, based on compelling evidence that this school needed focus, and that's enough for me.
Thank you. So you have a second point that you wish to raise.
Would you like to finish, please? No, no, because I'm, I'm going to leave this. No, because I, I'm going to leave it, go ahead.
So moving to a second point, or?
I, I will, I'm going to let her finish, because.
You still wish to make a comment on 2.6, correct? Please do.
Six is my lucky number. Through the chair to Mrs. Maxon Cannelly. I would like to believe, if I heard you correctly, that the district says, "This school needs improvement," correct? That was, again, that was what you just said, making sure. Then I would change the whole statement and say, "Every school in the district needs improvement." May I? Thanks. Every day we need improvement. I wouldn't single out one school. I would change it to say, "Every school in the district needs improvement."
Okay, can I go back now? Now, I need to go back to my topic before we go any further on this.
Please do.
Okay. So that goes, actually, that's a good tie-in to my original thought, was that if we want to say, "Use best practice models to create," we could have some pullouts of areas within the district that we want to particularly focus, one of which.
Can I, sorry, I want to make sure I follow which point that you're picking up on.
We're on 2.6, I've not, I've never left it.
You're still on 2.6?
Oh, yeah. I've never made my point on 2.6 to completion, because you guys went over there. Okay. So, "Use best, use best practice models to improve," and we have the alternative high school program, which is good, but we also have maybe one, maybe two elementary schools that I think deserve to be on the list. I think that we also have certain programs within our high school that could make the list. We have several other initiatives within, that we have discussed, that could make this list, and then continue, that engage every student in a challenging and rigorous program. And we could also throw a world language in there, for that matter, because we have made an overt promise, said many times, but still not quite verbalized within this document, which is 1.1-1, which says, "Develop and implement a world language program at the elementary school level that reflects the best research and best practices in the field." That is very ambiguous within two years. It's a very, very broad statement, nonspecific at all. And really, the specificity is what's key inside a really good plan, because it tells you what it is you're trying to achieve. And I would say that our objective, from what I, I think we all agreed, was to develop a K-through-five elementary to revise and improve a kindergarten through fifth grade. And it should be in here, very specifically, to be completed within two years, if we believe that. And if not, it should say, "Third grade through fifth grade," within two years. They should be achievable points, not broad, ambiguous. And similarly, if we want to make it broad and ambiguous, kind of what 2.6 is, using best practice models to improve, I mean, this is a general thing that we should be just doing every day, so I'm not sure why it's part of a five-year strategic plan. We should be doing that all the time, every year. This is not some new concept that should be arising. If there is something specific that we want to do to the alternative high school program, that deserves to be in here. If we want to do something specific to improve the performance of a particular elementary school, that could be here. If we want to specifically roll out a kindergarten-through-fifth-grade language program, that should be here. To generally improve by using best practices models, so that every student is challenged and rigorous, that is just, of course, what school wouldn't want to do that? Nonspecific. So while I think it's all very nice that we're debating the linguistics of how we're constructing this, so it doesn't offend anyone, I think that it doesn't say anything really either, other than that we need to improve things, this being one of them. But we're not saying that it doesn't need, we don't need to improve other things either. So if we have something specific, let's say it. That's what this document should be used for. I think we are just throwing everything in there and being very vague about everything, so that then really very little is ever going to be accomplished, because we have nothing tangible to point to.
The comments that board members wish to make on the district improvement plan. Mr. Convetito.
This has been a very interesting five weeks with this plan, because my take is very different, and I don't disagree with your take, okay? But my take is, when I look at the pages prior to the data points, okay? And, you know, section three and section two of leadership capacity and resources, and then I look at the data points, to me, this plan says, "We want all of these people to succeed, and this is the resources that we're going to do." Now, why the alternative high school is a pullout in there? Maybe because it's that drastic of an issue that we need to address. So, so I look at the document differently, and it's, it's interesting how different people look at this document. I look at it and say, because we have, in our data points, covered all of our students, K-through-12, with data points, and saying, "We want all of them to approve, improve." So I, I'm not sure which way is the right way, to be honest with you. And I, I guess that's why I'm just still sitting here listening to everybody. But I had to make that comment, because your take and your view of it, again, is very different to me, because our student indicators are for all students, okay? Not for one school, or, or, or one language area, and so forth. So I, I guess, either, and maybe I'm reading it wrong. So I.
Can I clarify?
Sure.
Just before, Mr. Llewellyn, you don't mind if Mrs. Lou McCormick goes next? Please do.
So my clarification is not to do with the rest of this, which does show that we're going to set goals and measures for, you know, our entire student body, and I'm hoping that it's provided in the specificity, so that we don't lose the individual student within it, because I think that's very important. The more granular the data is, the more we can drill down to individual student performance, rather than just aggregate data, which is less useful to, I think, kids and parents. But going back to the point that we were just talking about, what I, what I have issue with is not the whole back section, which I will say has a lot of data, is 2-6, and how, as you just mentioned, why we're pulling out the alternative high school, and you, as you just mentioned, perhaps it's because there's a, a great need there. But I would say that on par with that, there are probably a handful of other situations that are also of great need, that if we're going to pull one out, we should pull them all out and highlight them, because they need particular attention within this next five years. So if we're going to pull one out, then let's pull the other few that we think are the most important and most needy situations, and let's highlight them and say, "We're going to do this for these within the next five years." And that's why they're being pulled out, because we view these as the most needy situations within our district. The back part, I agree with you. We are looking at all the students, and if we have enough granular detail, we'll be able to read a lot into all this data, if we truly do it right. But this part, this kind of, this kind of bothers me, because what it, what it does is it, is out of all this data, it tells me, "I only really care about this part, this particular school, above all the others." So whereas I have all this data, I'm really only going to focus on this little subset of the data in the next two years as being my priority amongst the other ones that are marked for two years. Whereas I would argue that there are probably, if we're going to do it that way, we should mark all of the top needs and highlight them together, and then we can focus.
Mr. Llewellyn, I think you had your hand up.
I did, thank you. So a couple of quick comments, without going into too much detail here. One of the things that was brought up at the roundtable was the need for interim steps and measurements, or goals or objectives. I don't see those in here. And I understand you addressed that in the memo, but I still think that to have a goal set five years out, that's not going to come back to the board for voting the way this is drafted, for three years, is interesting, although it's reported back in a year, that language should probably be changed, where the board has inputted on it every year. I also didn't see in here what we're doing in our first year. Our first year starts soon. So, you know, we've got things labeled, it's going to take two years, it's going to take three years. I think to be effective, it would probably be good to at least know what we're starting on the first year. I saw a sentence in here that said, "We're going to define what happens in our first year," but it's not defined. And I would think that the administration hopefully knows what we're focusing on first, if it's starting, you know, July 1. I think that if we look at, if, if, we, we also don't have a priority. I understand priorities change and they shift, but we need to understand what, what is our priority over the next couple of years.
So I'll ask Mrs. Parks, I think the paragraph that Mr. Llewellyn is referring to is on the third, third page of the memo, where it talks about how to define the first year's priorities. And so I'll ask Mrs. Parks to comment on that, and anything else that she wants to in response to Mr. Llewellyn's comment.
Yes. So, this, the first step in the process is to ensure that the board supports the plan. And all of the specific actions that are listed cannot possibly be started at the, in the first year.
Correct.
The things that we have to consider are cost. We're going to have to cost out all of the different specific actions, so that we don't put too much budget pressure in any one year. The second piece is, we're not going to assign one set of staff, five. The second piece is, we're not going to assign one set of staff, five specific actions to accomplish in one year, and a whole bunch of other staff have nothing to do. So we have, it's a lot of work. Once the board approves the plan and says they stand behind the specific actions, then we have a lot of work to do to lay out when we're going to start working. So, to say three years out that we're going to set a target for a specific action that we decide later, we aren't even going to start until year four, would not make a lot of sense to us. So, once we have laid out year one, the board will get feedback on the specific actions. Now, what we've done is asked you, as a board, if you have priorities, reading all of these specific actions that you want us to begin working on initially, then we would like to get that feedback from you. And from your priorities, we can narrow them down, and then we can look at what staff will need to be involved, what will the cost be? And from your prioritized list, we can set out year's one, year one's work, and then we can set out perhaps an outline of year two's work. But anything that isn't finished in year one will have to be carried over to year two. So when we go to year two, we have to have that consideration as well for staff and budget. So, to say that we're going to set intermediate targets is difficult since we're not sure which specific actions are we're going to identify. So, I believe there, the board will get an update every fall on where we are in terms of each specific action. And at that point, you will certainly get data that tells you where we are in terms of accomplishing that action.
So, if I can look for some clarification here. So if we look at, say, science, why? Because I turned to that page and there's a number out there for a 2020 target.
Yep.
So we're looking at the CMTs. We're saying that we're not going to, we've already set a five-year goal, but if we don't start focusing on that...
We're going to look at all of that data every single year unless it's not available yet. For example, STAR.
Okay.
There's some confusion. We haven't even started using STAR yet at the elementary level. So, we can't give you baseline data because we don't use it yet. And we have to actually implement it to get the baseline data and then set the target. So, some things that we're already using, we can look at the baseline data that we have from the current year or the prior year and set a reasonable target. But we'll, we're going to be looking at all of this, this data every year.
So we come back with five targets, and let's just say hypothetically...
Actions. You're going to come back with specific actions, not targets.
Five specific actions. So hypothetically, the district starts to work on that, on those five, and as first year things.
If we can, if we can commit the staff and budget to those, yes.
Okay. So, when would we start to, can you roll out the timeline for me? So, we'd come back with this, we'd come up with five, then budget's not in for next year, or is it?
And so my understanding of the way it would work is, again, if all nine of us submit what we think should be priorities by July 9th, the district leadership team will take all of those into consideration and make them part of the district initiatives that get handed out in September. And if they don't include something that the majority of the board thinks is important, they're going to have to have a good budget or staffing reason why not.
Okay. So if we walk through this further, so we get the five priorities.
Yep.
They go on to the plan. Do you then set intermediary targets for the next four years because it's going to take us a year to get there? Or do we still have a 2020 target?
So, we'll set a five-year-out target, and then each year, we'll, in the fall, you'll get an update.
We set intermediary targets, or we just go for the end target with interim reporting?
I don't know that we need to set intermediary targets because we have the five-year target and we're going to look at where we are each year. I mean, if that's something the board really wants when we get to that point, we could certainly discuss it. But, you know, it's not necessarily always going to be a perfect, straight line in increase for targets.
Of course it's not.
So, so we believe that setting the five-year target gives us a point to reach, and we have to look at each year's results to see how much, how closely we're getting to that target.
Okay.
And the other point in the, in getting your priorities and setting the specific actions each year in the summer is because they will have budgetary impacts. So we need to have those before the board so that you know what the impact will be as you build the budget for the following year.
Okay. And, you know, as I look at these, I'm not sure, some of them are straightforward, but some of them, as were pointed out by, you know, Ms. Lou McCormick, are kind of vague. So, it's going to be hard to...
So, thank you. Mr. Fadabey, and I had said, "Let's try and get to the public by 9:30." Do you want to make one inquiry and then we go to the public?
I'll try to be real quick because we're talking about this topic. A lot of what was said, I don't see in this document, is what is going to happen necessarily. That's on page nine, review progress. My original recommendation, which was not included in here, was language to the effect to have, "Prior to September of each year, the superintendent shall present the implementation status of the district improvement plan, together with any recommendation, recommend..." All right. The original language, "Prior to September of each year..." I'm trying to be quick, please. "Prior to September of each year, the superintendent shall present the implementation status of the district improvement plan, together with any recommended modifications for consideration and affirmance of the Board of Education." That is what I, I understand you're referring to, is some sort of annual review. But the administration under the, what's in here and what was left was, "The administration will prepare a public update each fall on the progress of student performance indicators and the specific actions completed during the previous year." That's not to the board. And you can submit a public document that tells you where you are, but the board may think that we're not where we should be, or we should be somewhere different. I want, they want to discuss it. But the board would not, because it's not necessarily to the board and presented to the board, it's, the board would have no input as to whether or not they believe that the board believes we're on target, off target, or maybe we have to a different target. So I think it's important for the board to be maintained within the process and at least have the ability or option to redirect if necessary, modify if necessary, or say we're doing a great job, if that's where we are in the district. But that's the problem I have, and that's the problem that I think a lot of them have, is that there is, if, once this plan is approved, it's a five-year plan, and there may not be any board input until the third year, as you literally read this plan. And I think that is the concern and the indication that, well, you're going to get updates, and therefore you should, you should feel comfortable that we're proceeding and that... I think that's the issue, is the issue is that we need a review process, in my opinion, annually, just an update where we are, where we're going, and keep it on track, and modify if necessary.
And you honestly think that Dr. Tittle will just post this on the website and not bring it to the board?
The wording says Board of Education. That's what I'm unclear about through the chair, Mr. Fadabey.
Yes, the strategic profile's only been posted and not presented.
In the text above where you were just reading, it says, "reviewed by the Board of Education."
Right. We can do that, we review, we review it. The Board of Education reviews it. That doesn't mean Dr. Tittle's going to review and present it to the board. That means the board reviews it. We review it.
I think the intent is clear, but if you want to continue to work on that language to make it more clear in your mind...
Well, it suggested language, but it wasn't adopted. I can suggest a different language.
Mr. Lullen, can I finish my sentence? One of the things that I think the staff have to take into consideration, when you use the language before September, that effectively means the August board meeting. Because we don't, you know, well, we don't normally meet in July. And most of the data is not really available, not all of it, but a lot of it is not available till the end of the school year. And so I think that they're somewhat concerned about saying, "Okay, exactly what date we will be able to accomplish this review and get it in front of a board in an appropriate month." So I don't think they object, at least I don't object to them saying, "Yes, it's going to come to the board so the board can review it annually." It's a question of what month is best.
Pick a month. A month doesn't make a difference to me, as long as there's a month.
Fair enough. Okay. Mrs. Lou McCormick, did you want to make a comment? Because, not Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
First of all, I just want to read from this memo to make sure that everyone on the board understands because I think it's important that we all get this input in that the staff does not get held up by not realizing this. But we did receive a week ago the suggestion that, you know, these, the first year's specific actions are yet to be determined. When they are identified, they'll be included in the district initiatives, and that the Board of Education members can provide input by suggesting which of the specific actions should be undertaken in 2015, 16, with the suggestion that, "Prior to the July 9th meeting, each board member prioritize the top 10 specific actions from pages 27 to 31." So I just, I reiterate that because it's almost felt like not everybody on the board was real, we're being asked to submit our ideas. As Mrs. Parks said, you know, it's important that we, as members of the public and as the sitting board members, that we have buy-in on this as well. And I think this is a very explicit outreach to us to help in the setting of these priorities so that I hope all nine members will avail themselves of this by July 9th so that the staff has the time to work with that from a budgetary and staff time consideration.
Okay. So now, if I may, can I go to the public so that we're, they have an opportunity for conversation or not? It's not by unanimous consent, so Mr. Convetito, you have a comment you wish to make?
Yeah, I want to address through the chair to Mr. Fadabey. In Part III, Review Process, the highlighted blue area, and no later than October 1st annually?
Reviewed by the Board of Education periodically and at least annually.
But a date certain annually, right?
Reviewed by the Board of Education. Not a presentation by the superintendent of where we are. We're going to review it.
Okay.
A year later, we can pick up the same document and we can review it.
And is that, Mr. Convetito?
We still don't know where we are.
No, Mr. Convetito, is that where you want to add the "no later than" or something like that?
No later than October 1st annually? Well, I'm trying...
No, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to see, that statement just says, "As such," the whole statement was, "District improvement is necessarily a continuous process." As, as such, the district improvement plan must be reviewed by the Board of Education periodically and at least annually.
Okay.
You can do that without any superintendent input, and you can do that without knowing where we are in the administration of administering or implementing the plan. That just says that we're going to take a plan that we passed and we're going to review it. We don't know where we are in the plan.
No, I understand your point. I'm trying to work on language that gets us to where you want to be.
Well, the next sentence, which was omitted in that proposal I had, those two, those two sentences were adopted in my proposal to this new draft.
Okay, but I...
The language that was omitted...
I would like to make sure that when we say at least annually, that we have a date certain. So I would like to insert October 1st annually, no later than October 1st annually. Would that, through the chair to...
Makes no difference to me.
Ms. Parks, do we have those S-BAC datas by that time, that time enough to compile that?
Yes. We should have, most of the data we expect to come in in spring and late summer.
But that is, there's no indication that we're going to be presented with that data. There's nothing in that sentence that has that data presented to us. So it doesn't make a difference.
I'm not done yet.
All right.
He wants to change the, he wants to add a whole sentence.
I mean, I have no problem with yours. I just would like to have a date certain in there, if you want us to want to...
I did have a date certain. Prior to September of each year, "The superintendent shall present the implementation status," which we get an update where we are, we get information, "of the district improvement plan, together with any recommendation, modifications for consideration, affirmance by the Board of Education." So we get the data, we get to consider it, and we get to act upon it. The prior sentence, which we're, you're talking about now, which I assume you're going to say is okay, just gives us, we can review it, but we don't have information of the implementation status. Because there's no requirement for the superintendent to provide that to us.
Okay.
So that, so the language that indicating was left out...
I would be more than happy to defer to your language with an October 1st date rather than it's prior to September.
And what language is in that specifically?
What?
The language being, "Prior to October of each year, the superintendent shall present the implementation status of the district improvement plan," which is not in this document yet.
No later than October 1st.
I think he just said by September. He said September.
Prior to October, it doesn't matter. But that language isn't all in here, is my point. Well, as I suggested it last time, I suggested after the, after the blue wording where it says, "And at least annually." That just indicates what we're going to do. We're going to review it, at least annually. After that, "Prior to," if you want to use October, use October. "Of each year, the superintendent shall present the implementation status of the district improvement plan, together with any recommended modifications for consideration and affirmance of the Board of Education." So therein lies the requirement that, you know, we're going to get information.
No later than October 1st instead of prior to?
It doesn't matter. I don't, I...
Sorry.
As long as it's, the time when it happens is not as critical as to that it happens.
And it probably makes sense to have the language conform to our meeting schedule. So, prior to the first meeting of October, probably makes sense.
No later than, no later than the first meeting of October.
Yeah, not prior to, but no later than.
Yeah, no later than, yeah.
Okay. We got that? I ask unanimous consent?
So, let me first ask if Mrs. Parks has the language that she thinks is what has been asked for, and if you do, then read it. And if you don't, then we'll ask Mr. Convetito to clarify it.
I would ask Mr. Convetito to clarify.
So, starting with what word and then add a phrase, right? Or does the word stay exactly as it is and at least annually, and then you're adding something?
Mr. Fadabey has the exact word.
Okay.
Exactly, except for the modification you made with the...
No later than, then you have to... But the blue language is already in there for the first two sentences.
Right. So after annually, under the blue, okay, insert, excuse me, I'm sorry. "No later than the first meeting of October of each year, the superintendent shall present the implementation status of the district improvement plan, together with any recommended modifications for consideration and affirmance of the Board of Education."
And I assume that you can hand that document in so that Mrs. Parks can copy it from there?
I would ask unanimous consent to the board to make that change.
Is there unanimous consent? Unanimous consent with seven members present. Okay. Two changes by unanimous consent. May I go to the public now? May I go to the public? This is a discussion item. There's no specific item, agenda, recommended motion at the moment. Following comments from the public, we'll come back to the board. They may have further discussion and then determine whether they wish to put a motion on to approve it or whether to put a motion on to postpone it. So, any members of the public that wish to comment on the district improvement plan dated June 23rd draft, please come forward and state your name and address.
Suzanne Misco, 123 Rigate Road. I would like that this plan be postponed. A, I, in all due respect, I do think the superintendent needs to be here to make the full presentation of this so that the intent of this document is clear. To hear one member cite his opinion of what the document reads and another cite their opinion of what the document reads kind of shows where the problem is. Trust is a terrible thing to lose. And during the budget session, what was brought forth to the Board of Ed in regards to the Walter Fitzgerald campus was that a principal was needed to, because it wasn't working the way that it was. And we are now, I'm sitting here hearing a totally different story that we have a campus in the Fairfield Public School System in dire need of repair, that it is so highlighted in this document. The other piece I had a problem with is, that alternative program was not brought to the board when that budget piece was discussed. In fact, it didn't come up until a Board of Finance meeting on a presentation of your budget, where it was noted to the Board of Finance that this could be a revenue-making endeavor by making these changes to the alternative high school. And with all due respect, if that was the intent of that budget item, it should have been noted to the Board of Ed. It was your budget, it was, the intent was to go in this direction, it should have been clearly stated. And that's why I can appreciate the concern with 2-6. Because if we're going to be upfront about something and we have a curriculum or a new program we want to outroll, and we've put money into one part of it, then let's lay it out. Let's, let's be honest about it. Let's say, maybe this is the first phase of three phases, but let's discuss it. What happens is that budget comes in front of this board, it's a number, find it, look at it, it's like, "Where's Waldo?" Everybody has to discuss it, and you get little bits and pieces. And as you follow this budget through the other... And as you follow this budget through the other town bodies, you get to learn more intent, more intent, more intent. And so I appreciate the concern of the members who are questioning two-six. I questioned two-six because it wasn't clearly noted in the budget. And that continues to be a problem because it starts as one thing and it morphs into something else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that wish to come forward and address? You'll have to be quicker if you want to sit in the back row and get up to the podium.
I'm sorry.
Please state your name and address.
You bumped me last time, so now we're even. Tricia Donovan, Fairfield. The first thing I would like to talk about is that we keep using terms that are not interchangeable. Long-range district improvement plan and strategic plan. Those are two different things. A strategic plan usually focuses, I believe, on two or three areas. And a long-range district improvement plan can include many, many initiatives, but doesn't quite have the clear focus of a strategic plan. So I think it's confusing when we keep switching language all the time because people have different expectations, and that could be leading to the difference in discussion going on at the table here. The other thing that worries me is that I'm hearing, and the public has been asking for, what are the priorities? And I don't think that people should just look at the plan and say, well, I really like one-four, so I'm going to make that my priority. Priorities should be based on evidence and based on data. And I would assume that this plan was developed by a team that was looking at data and found initiatives and created initiatives based on the data. And the data should tell us what is more urgent, one thing over another. And it should also tell us that certain actions need to be taken before others can be taken. So for board members or public members to say, well, I choose this one, really, out of thin air, doesn't seem to make sense to me. So what's missing from this plan is really the data of the status report of where the district is that led to the development of all these initiatives, and that would tell us exactly what is urgent and what needs to be tackled first.
Thank you. Please come forward and state your name and address.
Hi, Tricia Pica, 114 Castle Avenue. I actually want to commend you on something. Page seventeen, Criteria for Quality Student Performance Indicators. The last line in bold says, "does not result in over-testing solely for the purpose of this plan." And I think that's really important to point out, especially when you look at all the assessments that are going to be going on in this district. And that brings me to my next one, which is under the Specific Actions, number twenty-eight. One-ten, to me, is a big priority. Expand and standardize the use of academic rubrics. Rubrics are meant to not be subjective. This would also give parents the ability to know at a grade level or a reading, writing, and math level the expectations of their students when being assessed. Thank you.
Jan Reber, Beaumont Street. I first want to make a point of order. It shouldn't come out of my three minutes.
You're not a member of this body, so points of order are.
You want to take my?
So, so please, use your three minutes wisely.
I'm here to speak under the basis of the public comment on the agenda that I received, which says, during this period, the Board will accept public comment on all items pertaining to this meeting's agenda from any citizen present at the meeting. There's no qualification that you can choose who you want to hear from or what you want to hear about. That's the sentence under which I came here. I think you've denied me my right under that sentence. With regard to the district improvement plan, I have a number of comments and questions, which I detailed in my written presentation, that I cannot cover in the allowed three minutes. There is no doubt that a great deal of thought has been given to the many data points in the Fairfield DIP. Gathering, compiling, and analyzing this wealth of data will be of enormous value. It's important, though, that this data be proactively disseminated to parents in full and on a timely basis. There are I-ready baselines in the DIP, but I don't believe I-ready results have been made available to parents. Academic expectation rubrics for grades eleven and twelve are being delayed for a year. Is another year really needed to establish a coherent program of rubrics so that students and parents understand what is expected in these critical learning years? The DIP does not include academic expectation rubrics for grades below eleven in the performance indicators, but Section one-ten of the Assessment Development and Implementation Plan states, quote, "expand and standardize the use of academic rubrics K through twelve, three years." So is it one year, three years? Do grade school parents really need to go three years before they get rubrics? It makes no sense. More generally, the logic driving the development of the DIP seems to be quite different from the approach taken by at least some of Connecticut's high performing schools. The introduction to the Fairfield DIP states, quote, "The Board's mission and goals are aspirational." Experts on the development of goals note that goals should only be articulated when there's a clear understanding of a current baseline. As one expert states, it is important to always begin with the question, where are we and how did we get here? The Fairfield DIP ignores that fundamental rule of good planning. There's no baseline, no common understanding of the current status of some of the key indicators of student performance. Without a full understanding of where we are, how can we decide where we want to go? In contrast, the 2012 Greenwich District Improvement Plan does not open with lofty aspirations. Instead, it notes that, quote, "In the fall of 2011, educators at both the districts and school levels conducted an analysis of standardized test scores from 2007 to 2011. Six issues emerged that account for most of the difference in performance between Greenwich and comparable Connecticut districts." Using its current baseline, Greenwich crafted three improvement goals, supported by, quote, "a diagnostic memorandum detailing why each of these goals are important, identifying the root causes of underperformance, and outlining strategies designed to improve student achievement." Fairfield's done nothing like that.
Mr. Reber, your three minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. You were reading from a document that you've emailed us, correct? So we all have a copy of it?
I do. I'd like to make sure a copy gets in the record. Okay. I'm afraid it will disappear from your email.
Other members of the public, please come forward and state your name and address.
Tom Llewellyn, Fairfield resident. I had a question regarding the post-high school student survey, and it shows it's to be determined and what the actual survey was going to try to find out. It's kind of broad and ambiguous. I do know, if I'm not mistaken, there's a 10,000 price tag on that, though. And I'm just wondering why we're waiting to, waiting for the students to graduate and before we ask them if they're really prepared for college. I mean, over the course of this year, I've heard a lot about the science curriculum in one of the schools, where AP Physics had eight different teachers this year, and many substitutes for that class were not science teachers. I mean, have we bothered to ask these students if they're prepared for Physics II? And in AP Chemistry at Ludlow, started off with eight students, only eight. And now I think there's six completing or completed this year. Whereas in the prior year, there were sixty-seven students in AP Chemistry. I mean, that's a 91% drop. Have we asked these students, are they prepared for the next level? And then in Honors Biology, you have three sections. And from what I've heard from students is that each of those sections had at least three or four substitutes in them this year. And even the science curriculum leader sent out a memo telling one section that they weren't going to be responsible for some of that material that was not covered this year. Instead, the exam would not be changed, but the scoring would be adjusted to reflect the material not covered. Has the administration asked these students if they're prepared for the advanced biology? Are we using our money wisely by giving a survey to students who have graduated or should be looking at the situation at hand? Why are the teachers leaving? I mean, over the past four years, since 2010, the number of teachers leaving the district have increased from forty-five to seventy-two. Are there exit interviews for these teachers to ask, why are you leaving? Instead of wasting the money, 10,000, to ask after the four years? We should be doing that in the classrooms at the end of every year and starting even in the middle school. That's my recommendation.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public wish to step forward? Please state your name.
Kelly Jacobson, Fairfield resident. I just want to reiterate a point that I made both at the last couple of meetings as well as in writing, which is about the dissemination of information to parents. And I guess, from my point of view, and from a lot of people that I've heard from as well and I talked to, and also just looking at some of the standards set up by the National PTA, it's really imperative that parents get to see all test scores that relate to their children. And I'm still not sure why, as a parent, I don't get to see the assessments and some of the test results that my child has engaged in throughout the year. And I-ready is an example. And if I misquoted in one of my letters to you that it was star data, it's only because I don't exactly know what my child's engaging in throughout the course of the year because I don't see anything. And I just, I just question why, how difficult would it be if we were to add in, on page thirty-one, under the Parents section, we talk about in four- eighteen, the research and develop and enhance school-family partnership at each school? Why, in the spirit of trying to be more specific in what we try to do so that we can feel like we have accomplished something, just very clearly state that any test that our child is given, if we choose as a district to have to give our child that test, that parents immediately get the results once they're available. It's not that difficult to write into it. And why, I put that into writing. I've said it twice now. And I'm just not sure. I believe there should be some discussion as to why something like that wouldn't be included at this point. And in the spirit of saying that we need data to understand what the issues are, that should be part of it. We should be looking at everything, and parents should be looking at it so more parents will know more about what is going on with their child. So you might be able to see more people come out here and speak about those things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that wish to make a comment on the district improvement plan? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Kelly McGwinney, Churchill Road. I just wanted to weigh in on the alternative high school. I truly hope that, you know, a passing comment about the possibility of someday having this be a source of revenue, not sink this measure. This is a program that needs help, and I know you can say everything needs to be improved, and I understand that. But I think we heard very clearly during the budget process from Dr. Title that this was an area that really needed to be focused on. And we've already heard that, you know, it's impossible that we can add out-of-district students without, you know, measures being taken place, so that's safeguarded. So I hope that you will keep that in the district improvement plan. And I have very young children, so I don't have a horse in this race. I just think it's important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any final comments from the public on the district improvement plan? Okay, so back to the board. Are we ready to decide whether we wish to postpone to the next meeting, July ninth, or whether we wish to take action tonight?
May I make a comment?
Please do.
I think we might want to discuss some of the comments that we just heard here and get that feedback in before we postpone it, because I think there were some very valid points made.
Okay. Further discussion, Mr. Llewellyn?
So, you know, of the things we heard, obviously, a great number of them. But, you know, the test results being provided to the parents, we've heard that now for quite some time. And I think that is key. If we're testing the children, the children should have the right to, to, the parents should have the right to understand what those test results are. There has been an increasing tendency to call things district tests and district assessments so that they don't need to be shared. If we are testing, I think results should be provided. I think another really important point that was made was the need to be given some insight by the administration as to what are their priorities? What do they see taking precedent needing to, what flows before which other item? You know, we don't have any metrics. We have a pick list here that is going to, you know, will be, people will be making choices based on who knows what, just personal priorities. I'm not sure that serves the students of the district properly. I think we need to get information from the administration saying, here's our recommendation for the first several years. Here's why we've decided to do that, and put a timeline on it. I think to come out to the board and say, hey, what's your pet project? Let's vote your ten top pet projects. I don't think that that adds the cohesiveness that we really need to put this forward. One of the other comments that came up was about the rubrics and standardizing things across the district. That's something we've been hearing for years as well. You know, what so-and-so's learning at one school is not the same as it is at the other school. You know, you won't be responsible for this material if, you know, you didn't cover it, yet you'll be taking the same test and get bonus points for it as well. I think that. Let's see. Okay, now I'll stop there. I've got some others to add, but not from what was said in the public.
Other board members wish to make a comment before we take action on disposing of this item, either by putting a motion forward to approve it or put a motion forward to postpone it? Mr. Convetito?
Through the chair to Ms. Parks. Is there a reason why I-ready and other test scores are not being disseminated at this point in time?
It's not my understanding that they are not being shared with parents. It is my understanding that there is a report that can be produced out of the I-ready system that is not shared with parents because the measurements are unlike any that we've ever, that parents have ever seen. There is a national percentile that is shared. There is on a score, there are scale scores that are shared, but those scale scores are reported, they're kind of meaningless because they're reported in terms of early, mid, late learning, which is not extremely helpful to the parents. So it is my understanding that those scores are shared by the teachers and that they are shared at conferences. And when parents want to sit down with the teacher, which is our preferred way of having the common assessment shared, because otherwise, the purpose of those assessments is to determine where a student is during the year in progress along the standards that they should be learning. And we believe the best place for the parent to understand that is in a conversation with the teacher. So that's how those assessments are reported out, and that is my understanding. So that they're not shared, the only thing that I know that is not shared is the actual, you cannot have a copy of the assessment because they're common and we use them again. And those are not even FOI-able, according to state statute, because we need to reuse them. And there are, there is a report that can be produced out of I-ready, but our staff has looked at it and the parents, or the teachers and the administrators have felt it's more confusing. They would prefer to have a conversation with the parent instead of producing that piece of paper that they don't feel is helpful. That's my understanding.
Sure.
Can I answer your question, Mr. Convetito? Okay.
You're welcome.
Follow up on that.
Let me make sure every board member participates. Mrs. Lou McCormick?
Just so you know, not all parents are getting results. In fact, I don't know any parents that are getting results, and there may be some at certain schools that are. But I, for one, have not had any results or discussions regarding the testing shared at all. So maybe, maybe there needs to be some sort of a follow-up or communication on, and that's maybe why writing it within the plan will give it specificity that, in fact, this will be done as opposed, and even if it's an easy fix because it should be being done already, well, then you get marks because in September, boom, or whatever.
So I, if I could respond?
Please do.
I think one of the concerns, and I'm kind of going out on a limb here because we have a new Director of Elementary Education who isn't here yet, who is not hearing me say this, but I think we have created a huge disparity between the elementary and secondary because secondary gives parents tremendous access to data about their children through the use of the Parent Portal and Infinite Campus. The elementaries are not using that at the level we would like them to use it. So one of the initiatives, that's an initiative, it's not in the district plan, but an initiative that we, I particularly have set forth because I oversee technology, is that the elementaries do not use, the elementary teachers do not.
I oversee technology, is that the elementaries do not, the elementary teachers do not use the gradebook component to Infinite Campus, because they have a standards-based report card, which is produced through Infinite Campus. My suggestion is going to be that all of the common assessments are scored. Now, it's going to take some sharing to help parents understand what those scores mean, but they can certainly be housed in the Infinite Campus gradebook at the elementary level, and then parents can access that information through the Parent Portal.
Okay, so I think that would be great.
I do believe that will help fix some of the inequity between what parents have access to, between elementary and secondary.
That would be very helpful. And just further on the rubric topic, again, there were rubrics, and then the rubrics changed.
I understand.
And then, right, so.
At the secondary level, at least at the high school, I can tell you, we have rubrics that have been approved. Now, when you use rubrics, an important aspect of the use of a rubric is that the staff understands the language of the rubric, and they all implement them and use them in the same way. So that takes some calibration and some understanding and training. So where we are at the high school level is rolling those out in classrooms, training teachers, bringing teachers back together, ensuring they're using the language in the same way.
And you know what?
And that's happening at the elementary level, too, but I know those rubrics are not quite fleshed out.
Right. Because I would say in high school and middle school, the advantage you have, again, with Infinite Campus, and there's all these tests. I mean, everything is so transparent. You see every test, every homework, I mean, everything is there. You add it up, you average it, boom, your grade. In elementary, it's so subjective. A child can get 100 on every single test, and that's an M. Why? I don't know. Should it be an E? Should it be, you know. So transparency, I think that there, definitely, we have to do something, because defining what an M is, defining what an E is, and not caring how many kids are M's or E's or P's or whatever, they are what they are. Every kid learns at a different speed. There's nothing shameful about, you know, being here versus there, or whatever, because they'll catch up later. Or if they don't, they may be good at something else. Who cares? But we need to at least know. We need to know what the child is doing, and where they need to improve, or where they're really knocking it out. And if we don't have consistent metrics, as you know, I think, what do we do? Like, I think it's confusing for parents, that we're like, what are we doing with our kids? We don't know what to do with our kids.
I understand.
So if I can perhaps put you on the spot with your answer, Mrs. Parks.
Yes.
The district initiatives that come out each fall will still come out.
Correct.
That will include some initiatives that emanate from the District Improvement Plan, but the staff do other work. And there will be district initiatives on that list that just because the staff are focusing on things on a day-to-day operational basis.
Correct.
Is it your assumption that the district initiative that you commented on about implementing the, down into the elementary school, what is common practice in the middle school and secondary school, will this board likely see that on this fall's district initiative?
We haven't put those together yet, but yes, I would venture to say. I'll put some money there. Whether I win the bet or not is yet to be seen, but I would say yes.
Thank you. Mr. Llewellyn, you had a comment?
Sure. A couple of things on the testing and the I Ready. So I Ready takes 36 lines of our improvement plan here. I'm concerned that we feel as though our parents can't understand the reports as they're written. But we've got 36 lines on here that can summarize it into a couple of percentiles. What might be helpful is for you to disseminate to the board all of the reports that can come out of I Ready, so we can actually see and feel and touch exactly what everyone's talking about, so we can develop a firsthand understanding of the situation. Because it sounds like parents, even those who are board members, haven't seen some of the I Ready stuff. And if it's going to take up two pages or 36 lines, it might be helpful to see what that is. So I think if we could get that ahead of the next meeting, that'd be really helpful. Thank you.
Further comments that people wish to make before we decide how to dispose of this plan? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, followed by Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I would say to, I know I will be following up with Mrs. Parks, both with some of the comments made by members of the public, as well as some additional questions of my own, before I, and I, you know, with certain questions regarding the rationale of aspects of this, before I speak for, against certain parts. I'd like to get some information on my own. I will, one area in particular, and I'm giving the board a heads-up on this, but I want to hear Mrs. Parks first, were the addition of 11, 12, and 13. I have a lot of concern with putting in these placeholders, which make them de facto things that we will be including perhaps earlier than we are ready, and that's the reference to the S-Back, the PSAT, and then the SAT or the S-Back. One of the things I first complimented this plan on was the fact that it is using so many different ways to measure student achievement and student progress, which go beyond test scores. I was thrilled with that aspect of it. I thought we found a lot of ways to measure student progress. And then we put in three more standardized tests. But I'm willing to hear you out before I go off on a longer rant and use the board's time, because maybe you'll say something to me that I hadn't considered. But I just wanted to put that out to the board, that that will be a topic I believe I will be bringing up on July 9 with a great deal of passion.
So you may want to first have that debate with Mr. Llewellyn, who I think was one of the original ones who suggested that they be put in. Could I ask, Mrs. Parks, in responding to you, for those of you who may not be aware, the state legislature did pass a bill on this subject of S-Back versus SAT, and there is some confusion as to what the status of it is relative to whether it's been signed by the governor, and even if it's signed by the governor, what other steps have to take place in order to make that legislation effective. So could you respond to, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, but bring the board up to date on that as well?
Yes. So I'll give you a little background, if I may. There has been a lot of change with the College Board. PSAT, which most of our students take, which is Practice SAT, is no longer going to be given on Saturdays. It has also been changed to align to the Common Core standards. Obviously, the College Board is making a move to corner that part of the assessment market. The SAT, the new SAT, will also be aligned to Common Core standards. Those tests will no longer be available on Saturdays, when most students take them. So we were considering, we have some students who we find don't take the PSAT. Actually, for this population, we have a large number of students who don't take the PSAT before taking the SAT. So we've been having ongoing debates about whether or not to require our students to take the PSAT, meaning, now that it's going to be offered on a Wednesday during school hours only, it creates a bit of a dilemma for us, because we have to give it in school, and then do we let some kids not come to school who don't want to take it? So we are going to require that students take the PSA in school. And we believe it will really help the students. The College Board has linked all the PSAT and SATs to Khan Academy, which is an online tutoring program that helps kids. The feedback that you can get from PSAT and SAT is comprehensive. We think it's very helpful in giving us feedback in how our students are doing. So, along with that, the state has been looking as well at the SAT, because there is a lot of pressure from the community about the S-Back. It's one more test. Most students take the SAT. So our new commissioner is very supportive of substituting the S-Back with the SAT, because it's, they are both very aligned to the Common Core, and we believe the feedback from the SAT is actually better. So the legislation, the legislature passed a bill that said that the SAT would replace the S-Back in Grade 11. And I'm not sure yet if it was signed by the governor. The last I heard, it wasn't, but then yesterday, I heard it was signed by the governor. And now, as you know, the governor has to submit all changes to the federal government to make sure it, it works with the No Child Left Behind regulation. So the state of Connecticut has submitted an additional waiver to the federal government requesting that the SAT replace the S-Back in Grade 11. So when we'll find that out, we don't know. What we do not want to do is, I mean, what happens is, many of our students take the SAT anyway, so now, in their junior year, they would be double-tested if the legislature goes, if the federal government doesn't, doesn't accept the state's waiver. So we think it would benefit students, actually, if they don't have to, obviously, we wouldn't want them to have to take both. And since most students take the SAT, we think that's a move in the right direction.
Please do.
Two very quick follow-up questions. In mandating the PSAT, are you making that now a budgetary impact for the district, or is this?
Not in the upcoming budget, but the following year budget, and it will probably come out of high school allocations.
Okay. And second issue, just to separate the two items, I'm not by any means arguing that we shouldn't have the SAT replacing the S-Back. My argument involves having it in this District Improvement Plan, but again, for July 9.
So I will entertain a motion at some point, so that we get clarity, but Mr. Llewellyn raised his hand, so I will recognize him.
Thank you. A couple of items for the next meeting, if we could, please. One of them is, has to do with the climate survey. We have it represented here as just two points.
When you said climate survey, you mean the climate survey. Thank you.
Sorry, if I mispronounced that. And I'm trying to see what page it's on here. It's number 18 on page 39. And we have that down as just some average of a student response from 1 to 4. And as we discussed, when it was presented to us, that is not, I don't think, indicative of anything, because it's an average. I'd like to see that, if we could, broken down, please, by the six major domains. So we have six major domains where we categorize things by institutional environment, teaching and learning, safety, interpersonal relationships, communication. So I guess there are five for students, and there are six for staff. But the information exists, it's just a matter of putting it here. And I also think that, sure.
But I just want to clarify for Mrs. Parks.
Wait, wait, wait. Do you mind if Mrs. Maxon Cannelly interrupts you at the moment?
No.
Please do.
I'm just curious, because I agree with you, that it's not as it is on that page. But if you look on page 20, I'm just curious how much more specific you want than what's listed there for number 18.
I'll get there. So if you take a look at the data, and you break it down over those domains, and by student and teacher, I think what we need to concern ourselves with is the outliers. And when I say the outliers, people either agree or strongly agree, people either disagree or strongly disagree. So generally speaking, they're either agreeing or disagreeing. So you can categorize people's responses like that. And in looking at it, one would hope that by school, and you can kind of look at the middle and high schools as a group, and you can look at the elementary as a group. And when you take a look at that data, I would hope that the distribution across schools would be relatively normal or flat, in the sense that you would be, you would have the same number of schools that are outliers in the really strong, and outliers in the negative. In other words, if you rank them, you're going to see that those averages are going to show where individual schools either perform really well or not. But in doing an analysis, I'm sorry, Phil, do you mind? Thank you.
I'm helping Mrs. Parks understand the distinction you're making, because she was lost in the, in the page 20 versus page 39.
Okay. Well, the issue here is, when you do the analysis, Mrs. Parks, by the best or the worst, so to speak, when you're ranking them, you find out that there are some significant outliers. And that's something that we should be concerned about as we look at our district. And it's a district issue, because if we have one or two schools that are kind of, have some negativity in either pod, that should be a great concern to the district. And we need to figure out how we capture that here. And the problem is, when we look at these simple averages, they actually hide all the information, because it's just an average. It doesn't actually tell you anything.
So each school has their own school improvement plan, and they have identify those, the weakest areas from the school climate surveys, and they have to develop strategies to improve those scores and set targets by school.
And my point is that if we have schools that are outliers, those should be a concern of the district to bring into alignment, not necessarily of the individual schools. So the individual schools are going to have their own plans, but at some point, if you've got issues that are highlighted by this survey, which a lot of people put a lot of time into, I think that that needs to become a district issue. Otherwise, you know what? I'm not sure what an average of, you know, 3.2 and 3.5 actually tells me, because it's across everything. It needs to be by student and by teacher, and it needs to be by each of those five or six domains or groupings, in order to get any meaningful information out of it. But to combine it all as one, I don't think provides it the justice that it deserves.
Okay. You had a second point that you wanted to bring up as well?
But I lost it. Okay.
Feel free to email it into.
Yep, I will.
Mrs. Parks. Do I have a motion or not, Mrs.?
Motion to postpone.
To July?
9th.
9th? Is there a second? Mrs. Gerber, any comments on your motion to postpone?
No, I'd like to get to the other items on this, and I think we have an awful lot to digest here and follow up on.
Any other comments from board members on the motion to postpone? Okay. I don't know, the motion to postpone? Yes, no, we've gone to the public for motions to postpone before. Any member of the public wish to comment on the motion to postpone? Seeing nobody coming forward, back to the board. All in favor of the motion to postpone?
Is there a clarification?
Yes, please.
Is the intent of this to bring forth this same document, or to have the incorporations made that we discussed tonight in a new document, and then that presented, new document presented to the board as a final draft?
I think we have, with the exception of the two unanimous consent amendments, this board has not taken action on any of the individual suggestions of board members. So I am assuming the staff will take them into consideration, as they took the first comments, and as they took the June 10 comments, and those changes that seem to make sense to them, I'm sure they'll make the changes. And those that don't, they'll explain why, and then the board will be able to act accordingly.
I just want to clarify, the expectation is, we're going to get a new document with a different revision date.
There will be at least two changes because of the unanimous consent, correct?
Right.
So there will be a new document.
With some additional changes, possibly, something.
I can't commit the staff as to what they may or may not make.
I just want to know what we're going to review, is postponing the decision on this, but we may have another document to review as well.
Okay. So, with no further comment, yes, Mrs. Lou McCormick, on the motion to postpone? Not on the document, but on the motion to postpone.
Yes. Will there be an opportunity to?
Excuse me?
Point of order?
What?
There's no motion on the table, correct? Prior to the motion to postpone, it was just a discussion item.
Just a motion to postpone.
But the item that was on the table was just a discussion item, right?
Yes.
So there is no motion to postpone, because there's no, no action to be taken. We can just move to the next agenda item.
We could just move to the next agenda item. If that is, if that is appropriate, then we can do it as well.
Got it.
Okay, so the motion to postpone is withdrawn?
Okay.
And the motion to postpone is withdrawn? By unanimous consent, the motion to postpone is withdrawn, seeing no objection. You get the last comment.
Actually, I need a clarification. So at the next session when we meet, we're going to continue the conversation with revised doc- document, and we continue to have opportunities to propose any changes or additions to the document. Is that correct?
Correct. Until the document is approved by the board, each board member can make amendments to the document through motion. If you have extensive wording changes, it would be very helpful if you brought those in writing and sent them in in advance in writing. You know, a word here, a word there is one thing. But if you have extensive changes, the board would be helped if you could get that to us in advance. But yes, any board member can make an amendment to the document by motion.
Okay. So based on the memo asking for input of, you know, top 10, is that going to be deferred until we understand what the priorities of the district are and level of difficulty, so to speak?
I'm going to suggest...
Assume there are a dozen that they, no need to happen immediately and don't take flight.
I understand Mr. Llewellyn's comment about, well, I'll say I'm a little confused by Mr. Llewellyn's comment that says, no, we just want to have the staff set the priorities, and then we'll tell them whether they got it right or not.
No, we're asking them to make recommendations, very different from setting.
And so the document, the memo is set up to say, the board is welcome to provide input on what those priorities should be, that will then get mixed with staff viewpoints in terms of staffing capacity, time, budget, and then in September, they'll say, here's where we are. So I would encourage the board to still send in their top 10 priorities, because I think the action steps, maybe there'll be one or two or three changes to them, but I don't think they're going to be wholesale thrown out.
So I'm confused why...
So I would encourage you to continue to send in what you think the priorities for next year will be.
Understood. I'm confused why there was a deadline of July 9th, if you're saying it's going to happen in September.
To give the staff, the staff, each summer, work on what the district initiative should be, and they meet in staff meetings, take into consideration various comments board have made, and produce a result by September. So if you hold off too long past July 9th, you really don't give them much time to organize and chat about it. So I would encourage all board members to submit their top 10 out of the 60-plus action steps, so that the staff of this district will have that input as they look through district initiatives for '15, '16.
Can I have one more clarification question?
Please do.
So this is the district improvement plan, and how do we differentiate that from a long-term strategic plan? Is this the same document? This is not. Are we doing a long-term strategic plan?
We're doing a five-year district improvement plan. We're acting on a five-year district improvement plan.
No, I understand. I'm just wondering if we are also simultaneously to be, are we going to, what is the timing of the long-term strategic plan, and shouldn't they be working together? Like, I'm just not clear on the different pieces and the implementation and the integration of them.
Yeah, I can't answer that question, because then that would get into the debate as to is, is district improvement plan another word for strategic plan? And we each have different definitions of what a strategic plan should be or needs to be, and so that would get into a whole lot of discussion on what makes up a strategic plan. So right now, the only document we're working on is a district improvement plan.
Do we have a long-term strategic plan?
We have a five-year district improvement plan that we're trying to adopt.
I'm just wondering, within our bylaws, is there a requirement for a long-term strategic plan, and do we have one?
The bylaw that you suggested did not get passed, so at the moment, I don't believe that there is.
So we don't have a strategic plan?
No, we have a five-year district improvement plan.
Okay.
That's being considered by the board. So let us move on. Thank you very much for the discussion. The next item, Mr. Cullen, is approval of the long-range facilities plan.
Recommended motion?
So the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the long-range facilities plan per enclosure number two. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mrs. Gerber? Do you have a presentation that you would like to make before we have board discussion?
No, Mr. Chairman. Just that the latest package I included, I hope was helpful for all the board members. There seemed to be, last time, a lot of discussion around the capacity deficiencies, so I pulled those two pages out of the long-range plan, provided them. I also titled the top of them, whether it was a 504 building capacity or the 462 or 441, depending on the two elementary schools.
Thank you. Mr. Convetito.
On the waterfall schedule, what numbers are there? Are the 504s or the other lower numbers?
They're the lower numbers.
And through the chair, Mrs. Parks, what's the urgency in approving this waterfall plan?
I think so that we can get started on it.
Yeah, the urgency is so we can assure the town what order we want of the projects for probably the upcoming financial summit, which will probably be in September. And then that'll align the long-range facility plan.
Here's my problem, and I'll put this out to the board. If we are going to discuss redistricting and changing the specs on what we expect out of Holland Hill and Mill Hill from 504s down to their brick-and-mortar capacity, plus or minus a classroom or two, then this waterfall schedule becomes absolutely useless for financial planning, because we don't know what we're going to do and what we're going to use. I have no problem approving it with those numbers in there as placeholders, but I don't know what value it will be to the town bodies when it comes to planning out bonding in the future.
Can I only make one comment on that? The long-range facilities plan includes multi-million dollars' worth of projects. If we were to adopt a suggestion that was made at the last meeting, that we adopt a policy that says, we're going to redistrict to solve the classroom space problem, so we're not going to add any classrooms to either of these two schools, general classrooms. We may have to add classrooms because, you know, there's deficiencies, but general classrooms. That saves about $5 million from the plan. But the plan itself has so many more projects, and the town does ask the district, what is your long-range facilities requirements each, at the end of each summer? And then in September, give or take, maybe as early as, as late as the beginning of October, they hold a capital projects planning summit to mix the Board of Education projects together with the town projects. And the last plan that we have is multi-years old, and so the town, I think, is expecting us to at least say, here is what we have on our dockets at the moment. This is, I'll say, the third meeting at which a, can we solve the problem by redistricting has come up. I spoke to Mr. Patton, and he continues to believe that perhaps that should be looked at. If Mrs. Lou McCormick is still of an interest to do so and would want to join an ad hoc committee to do that, and if Mr. Convetito, because he seems to have raised it three times, wants to join an ad hoc committee to do so, then I would appoint such a committee. But I think that's separate from telling the town what our overall needs are, which go well beyond just that question.
So to follow up on my question then, through the chair to Mr. Cullen, on the, I'm sorry, thought I was. On your memo dated June 17th, in which you show a delta of 2.6 million on the two projects, so you're showing Holland Hill going from three additional classrooms down to two, And Mill Hill from five classrooms down to two additional classrooms, assuming we can find space for those other 75 to 125 students.
Can I interrupt just for a moment?
Sure.
That change is already built into the waterfall chart because of the revised maximum student enrollment projections, so those five would not require any redistricting. It would be if you took the next step.
Number two.
Step number two, as Mr. Llewellyn had suggested, to say, well, what happens if we don't build any new general classrooms? And therefore, that would require taking a look at redistricting. And that's, of course, that's another five classrooms, so it's another 2.6 million. So that to clarify which 2.6 million you're talking about.
Item number one.
Yeah.
When you show 2.6 million, that's reducing Mill Hill's from its five portables to two exterior additional classrooms.
General classrooms.
Okay.
And based on projections, that would not require any redistricting, the first step.
It would still require redistricting at Holland Hill to take it from three to two, because there's currently three there, and they're growing. So I guess my question is, are we going to keep the 9.96 million for Holland Hill and the 15 million for Mill Hill, okay, as placeholders on this waterfall plan? And how does the board feel about that? It seems to be an inaccurate number to me.
Correct. The board could put it back to the original number.
That's what was originally in there.
That was what originally was in there, and the board could say, no, let's put forth the larger number, just to cover our bases, if you will. Mr. Llewellyn, followed by Mrs. Max and Cannelly.
Thank you. Mr. Cullen, a couple of questions before we hear on the memo. So what growth analysis are you using to project where in town we're going to be having growth in population versus reductions in populations?
Everything we've been using is the information we got from the demographers.
And does the demographer give you a forward-looking forecast? Or does it only provide it does?
No, they project a 10-year, 10-year projection.
Okay, and by school, right?
Yes.
Okay. So when we look at the report in front of us, the letter that you sent out dated June 17th, the last paragraph under number three, the MGT report calculates their standard functional building capacity at, the maximum projected enrollment from the MGT report is 5,259 students. Where did you get that number?
Yep, that was from the 2010 report.
Okay. And what's the latest report that we have?
The latest report we have is just on the enrollment projection. So they're a little different numbers, they're lower.
Okay. So why would we be putting out in a public document that we're at 99% capacity? And why are you providing a number to us that is hundreds higher than the report that we paid for, that is updated as of, as of, as of June? No, May 1st, '14. So this is four years older, four years newer, but has lower projections. Why are we using older projections?
Because the 2010 report is where they did the capacity deficiencies on all the buildings. The 2014 report, they weren't asked to do that, they were only asked to do the enrollment projections.
Okay.
But we could change that bottom number on, that you just brought up, but three, to the highest projection in the 2014 report.
And what is that highest number?
I think it was in the 4,600, 4,630.
4,630, right?
It's a 1314 year. You'd have to go to a, you know, even a future year.
Right. So, but we're putting in this report that we're at a 99% occupancy rate, which isn't right, because we've never had that number of, we don't have that number projected.
Well, it's really the MGT's calculation.
Okay. But MGT superseded, it's...
Correct. But if you look at the section above, second paragraph in three.
Right.
Fairfield Public Schools uses 22 students a classroom, functional building capacity is 4,912. We currently have 4,733.
Got it.
That's accurate.
And where are the ECC students?
And you said 22, but you mean 21.
21.
Where are the ECC students?
Ward.
Ward?
Yeah. In ECC, that's at Ward. Ward High School.
So they're included in the 4,912 students, or sorry, in the, in the current enrollment of the 4,733. So if you take out those 100 and...
They're included in the high school enrollment numbers, not in the elementary?
Yeah, they're not included in the, they're not in this number.
But you're quoting the number here? No, they are in this number. I went back to the May. I went to the pink sheets. So the 4,733 number, our May 1st was 4,727, so it's off by several numbers. But that includes 114 of the ECCs. So we're already overstating by 114 students what the capacity is.
Do you mind if I grab that?
No, please do.
It excludes, the elementary school does not include the ECC enrollment. But, but yes, the basis of this memo was the 2010 MGT report that included all of the discussion around the deficiencies in the classrooms and the enrollment projections. The 2014 number is, is lower than that, and it would take the 99% down to about 86%. But the percentages are still in the 85 to 95% range that either we have used for our planning purposes, or that the MGT report recommends using in their planning purposes, because they use 23 students per class on average, and we use 21 students per class on average.
That's correct.
Methodology is about the same.
Right, you're right.
Okay. So the ECC does include the 115, or sorry, not the ECC, but the, the number you quote here of 4,733 does include 115.
Correct.
So you've already overstated our, or understated our capacity by, I don't know, six, seven classrooms? Because if you're a kindergartner, let's go see, what is a kindergartner good for? They're good for like 15, 16, I'm not sure, I'll have to look up at the, at the schedule. But the memo, I don't think, is factually correct, and we're being asked to approve a facilities plan here with information that's not necessarily correct. So when I get back to, when I go back to saying, we need to have an analysis done of a redistricting, you're asking us to make a multimillion-dollar capital investment when we don't know, we haven't been provided the information as to where growth is. We've got information here that's saying we're at a 99% occupancy rate upcoming, which I don't think is correct, because the newest report is going down. What we need is, we need to understand, where are we, where are we going, where is the growth? We need to be presented with facts as opposed to a decision as to where to invest our dollars.
We are not asking you to make a decision on a multimillion-dollar investment, because that decision can only be made when an actual project comes forward. This document is only intended to set out a broad planning proposal, so that the town and the school district can put their thoughts together and stay within the policy they have of the waterfall chart, creating less than 10% principal and interest payments. And so from a planning perspective, that's all this document is for. We are not asking this board to make a multimillion-dollar decision.
I'm not sure it needs to be approved by the board, because you're putting to us without the administration recommending which of the two schools...
No, the administration has recommended the document that is in front of you.
So the administration is recommending Holland Hill over Mill Hill, is that correct?
Correct.
Mrs. Parks, that's correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that is a recommendation that's being made. Now, we have capacity elsewhere in the district that could put kids in seats infinitely sooner than a project that won't begin for several years and won't be concluded for several years. I think that we need to have a proper analysis done as opposed to a waterfall provided. So, you know, it just, it makes no sense. We heard from Mr. Cullen at the last board meeting that it was somewhere between six and nine months before dollars started, needed to start to flow on any of this stuff. I think that we can take the summer and do an analysis, we can take the MGT projections as to where, the correct MGT projections as to where we expect the growth, and make sure that the growth is in the areas that we're proposing.
Mr. Convetito, and then followed by Mrs. Max and Cannelly.
Well, I'm not entirely unsympathetic with the... Well, I'm not entirely unsympathetic with Mr. Llewellyn's point of view. I think it's, it's necessary for us to decide, in the waterfall chart, and then again, we can say that there are placeholders at this time, point in time, but both of those facilities need core facility renovations, okay? And while I'm not sure that the 9.17 million listed for Holland Hill is what will be required to do that, because again, I do agree there's some excess capacity where we can move some kids in, but if I look at the differential of three, three classrooms down to two, I'm looking at about a 1.5 million, and I'm not saying that's insignificant, okay? A downward number, and I'm not so sure that you can do that with, with still providing the music rooms and everything else. So, I mean, I would be comfortable moving ahead with these as placeholders with the 9.1 million and the 13.3, with the caveat that we, we look at the redistricting moving forward, and that we get a committee set up as soon as possible.
Mrs. Maxine Connolly.
I agree in total with Mr. Confortito's comments. Having visited both schools, I think those school communities need to know the direction of this board, I think this town needs to know the direction of this board. Again, I completely agree with Mr. Llewellyn's points as well, that we do need to do a feasibility study. I mean, this ad hoc committee obviously will get its charge from the chair, but it's not with an idea that they're putting together the redistricting plan, it's that they're looking at the feasibility of doing as such. You know, moving one bus here or there, I'm not sure is necessarily the smartest strategic plan, but we won't know until that group gets together, assembles, and looks at our numbers, and looks at the situation, and comes back with a recommendation. But that said, these are two buildings that need work, and having seen Holland Hill and seen the nature of the work needed there, the formation of a, I mean, this, while it looks like it's far out on the building schedule, it's 2016, 2017, we're looking at next school year, needing to start to pull together this building committee, and to start to get rolling on this. And I think this direction needs to be, you know, clearly stipulated, and a clear commitment from the board that this work needs to be done, and, and that is a point of focus that, you know, is, obviously carries with a tremendous budget implications. And, you know, I'm very comfortable with supporting that placeholder, and then, you know, hearing from that ad hoc committee. But I think this plan needs to be supported, direction given to the town, and our commitment made very clear and explicit to that school community.
Further comment from this side of the room, since I haven't heard anything? Mr. Fattabene.
Everyone's in agreement that both schools need renovations and upgrading. I guess my concern is the sequence, and when that occurs, and how it's being suggested that one school may go first, and the other school has to wait. And those students in the schools that are waiting are going to be at that disadvantage while they're waiting for their, in essence, turn to be renovated. That's my concern. Since we reduced the scope of the project from a 504 student capacity to a reduced capacity, and therefore have corresponding financial savings than what was anticipated in the past, I would suggest if possible, what, what, what you can do possibly is to shift, if, if the decision is to go, you know, Holland Hill is, is the more immediate concern, to try and shift Mill Hill further ahead in the timeframe to overlap slightly with Holland Hill, so you're not just saying, so you're trying to, in essence, accommodate facilities for all the students, not just taking one in front of the other. If you, if you have those savings from the reduced capacity, and you have the ability in this waterfall schedule then to shift Mill Hill closer and overlap with Holland Hill, I'd be more comfortable with it, because then all the students are going to be addressed in a timely fashion, and you can justify it by the savings you had in reducing the scope to incur that expense at an earlier time. If that's feasible and possible, that's, I think, would be a better solution.
I would only comment that, do I think it's feasible for us to make that decision? The answer is yes, because it would express our desire that both projects happen sooner rather than later. But I see our members of the RTM are not still with us, but no matter what priority we put to these, and what projects we say should come as soon as possible, we still have to get approval from the town bodies to, to move them forward. So when you say, is it feasible for us to make that decision? Yes. Is it possible that the town is likely to approve $22 million worth of projects overlapping with one another? That's your kiss as good as mine.
Over a period of time.
Yeah, over a period of time.
And it's, they're already there at a reduced scope.
Yeah, I'm just reminding the board that we don't make the final decision on that.
No, I, we don't, no matter, we don't make the final decision, no matter what the We only make a, you know, we provide what the needs of the town educationally are, and the town then provides those needs. But I, that's my concern, and I don't like, in essence, we've, we've all decided that schools need work, but yet we're making one population wait for that work that was needed, and the other population not. And that's my, I don't think that's necessarily fair, once, once the need for that work has, has been determined. And the question, only question arises, can you financially afford to do it at a time that is fair for both populations of students? And that's what I'm trying to reach, that compromise, so to speak, to maybe have the ability, since you have a reduced scope and reduced cost, that the town wasn't expecting initially, they were expecting to do the, the full price renovations, that perhaps one timeframe can be speeded up, or at least overlap more to accommodate the needs of both those populations of students.
At the moment, the way it's laid out is, I think, Mill Hill is beginning its expenses just as Holland Hill is finishing its expenses in the same year, 2018, 19. So that's an overlap, are you saying you want more of an overlap than they begin when the other one is ending?
Yes. In other words, the, the bulk of the work doesn't incur, the $500,000 overlap is design work primarily, is my understanding. The bulk of the construction doesn't occur until two years later. The feasibility being you have, you're only going to have that one year of the larger overlap with a larger amount of money, but you will be saving costs on the overall scope of the combined projects, because you're reducing the scale. So the town was expecting a larger, two larger-scale projects that are now have been reduced in scope. So with the, with the reduction in scope of the two larger-scale projects, could you then have more of an overlap to accommodate the needs of the students that exist? And that, that's my concern, in other words. I, you don't like to have students in inadequate facilities waiting for, in ordinary periods of time, to, to be given appropriate facility. It's not a question of whether there's a debate as to whether it's a needed renovation or not, the question is timing. And who, who gets priority to get their facility first versus another student who is equally entitled to his public education as the next student? That's my concern. And I'm trying to reach a compromise whereby you can achieve a means to accommodate the needs of all the students in the district, and not just selected ones at different times.
Mr. Confortito.
I would suggest that we won't know that answer until we decide on a, on a redistricting plan. So I'm happy to leave the placeholders and then to revisit this in the fall once, and hopefully by that time, we would know what we would have a maximum capacity at those schools and the other schools, and then come back and adjust the waterfall plan based on the new projections. Because I do believe that if we do the redistricting, you will be able to slide Mill Hill up a full year, because I think that you will save that, that type of money in the, in the renovations.
So Mr. Fattabene, here's a question, and the next, you get 30 seconds to answer it, before we have to put a motion on, in the next five minutes to, by that clock, to extend the meeting. So we will put together an ad hoc committee, I'll confirm with Mr. Patton, his statement to me, and impanel that group. I'll say that in past efforts to go through the redistricting, I'm not sure that engaging the community in this conversation would allow it to happen between now and the end of the summer, but nonetheless, it'll happen as soon as I'm sure the three of you could make it happen. With that as a commitment, in Mr. Confortito's comment, would you say, okay, as a placeholder, let's move this forward, or what?
Well, I would suggest you maintain the, the plan you had in the past, then. Why make any, why approve another one when you're undecided as to what direction you're going to go in? Maintain what you had in the, we had a plan, we had a...
It's so outdated by number and projects that have occurred between now and then, that it's...
That, that was, I would, I would maintain the original plan, then, until you have a definitive plan and a reason to revise it. If you're saying that we're going to redistrict, may not need to revise it, then don't revise the original plan, keep, maintain the original plan till you know where, where you're going, and then revise it. You don't need to revise it necessarily, we were on a path to begin with.
Now, if I may take a short recess. The teacher evaluation plan, could that be held off till July 9? The budget transfers, I suspect not. Preferably not, but we would not be illegal if it was on the 9th. That's a hesitant no, so, okay, budget transfers.
That'd be yes.
Okay, so if we assume that we are going to move the Fairfield Education Plan to July 9th, do you wish to make a motion on the meeting?
So, motion to extend to 1110? If this is, if this is the sole item, then, that we're attempting to resolve, because everything else can be pushed off?
Mr. Confortito, do you wish to second that motion, or...
No, I would wish, no, I'm sorry.
No, no. You want to make a suggestion?
I would suggest that we go slightly long enough, because there are some people who've already expressed an interest to comment on...
Oh, I apologize, that's true.
I don't want to be disrespectful.
So, I'd like to make a motion to extend to 1120. I agree.
20, 1130, can the two of you agree on a number? 1120 it is. The motion in front of us is to extend to 1120. Any conversation on that? Seeing no conversation, all in favor?
Good conversation. Look, we just need to suspend the rules until we're done with these topics that are out.
Well, the motion on the table right now is 1120, so...
Comments, I did.
Correct. But we have to dispense with the motion that's on the floor at the moment, we can't just ignore that motion.
I'm not asking you to.
Yeah, okay. The motion on the floor is to extend the meeting to 1120. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Confortito, Mr. Fattabene, Mrs. Maxine Connolly, opposed? Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, the motion passes 5 to 3. The motion fails. The motion fails because we don't have 2/3. Do you wish, does somebody wish to change their vote so that we can?
We just suspend the rules until we're done, the topics that you just mentioned. That would be the conclusion of this, and then the financial transfer. Is that correct? Mr. Dwyer, is that...
Policy can wait till the 9th?
Yes.
Fine with me if you want, it's up to you guys. I think we should, but, but we need to make a vote. We need to vote.
Whatever we do, we have to have six votes for.
Correct.
I am not in favor of unlimited extensions, so we need six votes for something.
Make it 12.
No.
We're not going to use it, but let's not push ourselves against...
We have to quickly get something by that clock within the next minute, I'm, I'm using that clock at the moment.
Can we make a, and I apologize, this is not my, I'm not pro...
No, no, first, you made, first, Mr. Llewellyn, you made a motion...
Motion to extend to 1145.
To 1145. Is there a second? This is Lou McCormick. Any discussion on 1145?
Very quickly, is that with those stipulated topics?
Yes. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Llewellyn?
The budget transfer in the, in this plan.
The budget transfer is in, and the conclusion of this is in.
Yes.
Right.
Conclusion of the long-range facilities plan and budget transfers are the only two topics remaining, and then...
How about the minutes for the public?
To make this a quicker thing, after those two topics are done, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, which is in order any time somebody wants to make it.
Minutes.
Do people understand the question? Do people understand the motion, which is to extend, to extend the meeting to 1145, which requires six votes, so that we can cover 5C, which is approval of the long-range facilities plan, and 6B, the financial report and approval of the budget transfers? Everybody understand the motion? Mrs. Lou McCormick, you want to make a comment?
I know. Mr. Confortito had made reference to the minutes, and allowing the public to at least speak on that, and we can delay the motion, but at least allow comment.
Yeah, the motion is now at 1145. Whatever we can get done with, these are the two items, but if the board wants to continue, then the board continues. Any other comments on 1145? All in favor of 1145, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Confortito, Mr. Fattabene, Mrs. Maxine Connolly, Mr. Llewellyn opposed, Mr. Dwyer. The motion passes 7 to 1. 1145, continued discussion on the long-range facilities plan. Yes, Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Okay, as a point of clarification for Ms. Parks, when you made the recommendation for Holland Hill, was it based on the premise of population, the overpopulation? Or what, what drove the Holland Hill over the Mill Hill decision?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Cullen.
It was based on the enrollment projections.
So I guess my question comes back to, if in fact, we do redistricting, which addresses the population issue, because we're moving everybody out, so essentially, we could have an equal number of population at each school, then how do we come to a decision between Holland Hill and Mill Hill again?
Well, I think that's a judgment call for the board, because when you look at a $9 million project, now at 9.1, for example, 2.6 million of it reduced, if we redistricted and didn't have to add any general classrooms, you've still got 6.5 million dollars' worth of core improvements to the project. So, so those of us who have toured Holland Hill versus Mill Hill, I for one would still make the judgment that Holland Hill's core improvements still deserve to be a priority. But that's a judgment call for this board to make.
So my question is to Mr. Cullen, are the core facilities at Holland Hill much more deteriorated than Mill Hill? Or is it vice versa, or are they comparable?
I would say they're probably comparable.
Which makes it much more difficult.
Mrs. Maxine Connolly, followed by Mr. Confortito, followed by Mr. Llewellyn.
Obviously, I, I do not hold Mr. Cullen's position, I'm not about to question him in terms of saying that they're comparable. However, having been to Holland Hill, and seeing how closets are used, and seeing a classroom divided into four, and to seeing a social worker having to try to do work in a crowded library behind a curtain, I, having compared the size of principals' offices, which are having to be used for PPTs, which can number upwards of 17 people in a room, again, I'm not questioning the statement you just made, and yet I completely disagree with it. Having been to Mill Hill, which I, what, the one thing that's very much stands out about Mill Hill was the cafeteria serving line, that that is something that very much needs addressing there in terms of their core. And seeing a few of the combined uses, I think it was IT, and it might have been the ELL teacher using a smaller space. I mean, there was no question, there was things, space usages in that building, which I also, I would agree with Mr. Fattabene, there's absolutely a need there. But having walked Holland Hill and seen how that space and those closets are being used, to me, I couldn't begin to use the word comparable to describe what those two tours conveyed... I couldn't begin to use the word comparable to describe what those two tours conveyed to me.
Mr. Confortito.
I, I echo Ms. Maxon Connelly's remarks. I don't find the two buildings comparable at all. I find Holland Hill to be decades behind Mill Hill, both in appearance, both in feel. I mean, to watch dental hygiene being done behind a curtain in the APR room is absurd to me. OPTP is still being done in the hallway. Those all have spaces at Mill Hill, inadequate spaces, okay? I get that there is portables out there, but there is no way that those core facilities are even close to being comparable.
Mr. Llewellyn. And followed by Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, Ms. Parks, you have the unfortunate privilege to be sitting in that seat today. So, Dr. Tittle received a letter that was distributed to us about the racial imbalance not working. How is that playing to this whole issue that we're talking about now, core facilities, the need to change things? How far, he's got 120 days to reply, so how far are we along in the thought process?
I, I've talked to Dr. Tittle on that subject.
Actually, could I hear from Mrs. Parks, though, first, and then?
You don't want me to talk again, fine.
Please, thank you. She's a paid employee, sorry.
I didn't realize that you had the ability to tell board members they can't talk.
I didn't, I asked you to hear from her first, please, because I addressed the question to her.
So, we have not really addressed that at this point, and there are a lot of questions. I don't think the state is going to demand that we change dramatically what we're doing, but obviously, if the board looks at redistricting, that would be something that would come into play.
Okay. Thank you, if you would.
Thank you. Dr. Tittle does not believe the state will stick with the 120 days, because I think the state recognizes that it is not easy to come up with a plan that is workable and can be implemented, and so, he thinks that we'll have more than 120 days to deal with it. Clearly, if this board makes a statement that they are interested and willing to look at redistricting, redistricting may include looking at the racial imbalance problem and, in solving it that way. Past boards have not really wanted to go in that direction for a variety of reasons, but if this board is willing to do that, then the state also would recognize that that would take more than 120 days to do, so, so, Dr. Tittle's not all that convinced that we're under that quirk of a timeframe.
So, and the other thing about the 120 days is, we've got, what, one more, we've got the board meeting in July, and then?
In August.
In August, okay, so something will be presented to us, I hope, ahead of, with enough time to still meet whatever deadline, if it moves?
Yeah, if, if the deadline moves, he'll report that to us, and if the deadline does not move, we have at least two meetings, not looking at the exact date on the letter, May 20th, so, May, June, July, August, September, we probably have into September meetings to address this issue before the 120 days is up. Mr. Confortito.
Thank you.
I'm very reluctant to look at redistricting as way to self, racial imbalance, from a purely legal standpoint, okay? Redistricting should be blind based on ethnicity and race and so forth, and I'm not about to take on a redistricting with some type of underlying notion that it's going to solve racial imbalance.
And that was not my point. My point is, has this been taken into account in the waterfall and everything else?
Any other comments on, yes, Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, I guess just to reiterate what Mrs. Maxon Connelly and Mr. Confortito said, having toured both schools, I, I think that Holland Hill definitely is in serious need. And also, having, before I was on the board, I did take a tour of both schools when the facilities committee was looking in preparation of the 2011-2015 facilities plan that they voted on, and what was noteworthy to me is, at the time, I remember there were some spaces in Mill Hill, you know, art supply closets and whatnot that were being used for services, and this time, when I went to Mill Hill, the art supply room actually had art supplies in it, so that was noteworthy to me, and the fact that then going to Holland Hill, there were art supply closets being used, not for art supplies. Their enrollment has gone up, their core facility is smaller, and I think their location, too, makes it more difficult, so, for all of those reasons, and just the compelling reason of actually seeing both facilities, I, to me, it, it's a no-brainer. Sorry, I know, that goes against with what you were saying, but, yeah.
Mr. Fattabean.
I, I guess, yes, some board members are indicating a subjective feel as to what facility needs more than the other facility, but as I recollect, the last official report we got on the space deficiencies of both schools, Mill Hill had a higher classroom space, or room space deficiency than Holland Hill. As of today, Mill Hill has more portables than Holland Hill, so if the objective of the school district is to provide adequate classroom and space facilities for their students, Mill Hill would be more in need because they have a higher deficiency of classrooms. If you, that's not true?
Let me, Mr. Fattabean, please finish your...
And I don't mean to be facetious. If you tour Mill Hill, there's an entire classroom being used as a computer lab.
I'm looking at the, at the official report that was given by a third party indicating what the space deficiencies of the district are, and if you disagree with that report, and, or my interpretation of the report is not accurate to the extent that that report concluded, that Mill Hill has a higher number of classroom or space deficiency than Holland Hill, then I'd like to see you point to that report and indicate where that's the case, not, I saw this and I saw that. That's my point. And my other point is that there are, if the district has set a policy to, to remove portables from elementary schools or other schools as much as possible, and if you want to fulfill that, that policy, which the board approved, Mill Hill would be the, remove more portables in a quicker time if that was done first than Holland Hill. So, by, by those board policies, or at least that board policy, one over the other would take precedence. I understand both schools have needs. I'm looking at the more objective criteria, and not the subjective criteria, as to what school looks worse, doesn't appear quite right, looks crowded, I'm trying to be objective about this, I'm not trying to be subjective. I'm, I'm trying to take emotions out of it, and each one is emotionally attached to their school, I can understand that, but objectively with numbers, there's a basis to argue that Mill Hill is a school more in need than Holland Hill, as far as space deficiency and number of portables. Conditions can be debated, what condition the school is in. Whether Mill Hill is worse or whether Holland Hill is worse is debatable, I think, as far as condition.
Yeah, my only comment is that I, I don't think the board can just look at one particular, whether it's the portables, or deficiencies, or general classrooms, or the growth of the population, and say, okay, this particular issue is more important to me, and that drives Mill Hill, or this particular issue is more importantly, and that drives Holland Hill. It's the sum total of all of the issues that we're trying to face that caused the last board, and Mr. Fattabean debated that order then, that put Holland Hill first and Mill Hill second, simply because a priority does have to be set, because the town cannot do two high, two elementary schools at the same time. And so, I, I think the board is still debating the sum total of all of the needs at both schools, and reasonable people come to different conclusions. Mrs. Gerber, followed by Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Yeah, I guess, through the chair to, to Mr. Cullen, just the, the space deficiencies report that, that Mr. Fattabean is addressing, when was that done? Is that from 2010?
Yes.
So, it has not, that has not been revised. We have the new enrollment numbers that we received last year.
That's correct.
But we do not have a new...
Space deficiency study.
Space deficiency, so that, the numbers that Mr. Fattabean is addressing are based on the 2010 numbers.
Correct.
Like, the enrollment numbers, and Holland Hill's has gone up in the past five years, Mill Hill has gone down in the past five years, correct?
Correct, there's been some changes at the two schools since 2010, but...
And we don't have the new...
That's the data we have, that we used in the facility plan.
Right, but we don't have a new report based on the numbers in the schools at this time, correct?
We don't have a, we don't have a new report on the capacity deficiency.
All we have is the enrollment numbers. We do not have the space deficiencies. Those, those numbers are based on 2010 enrollment numbers, which have changed at both schools, correct? Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Lou McCormick.
And when I listen to this conversation, I keep coming back to, a lot of the concern seems to be the population growth. A lot of this is premised on the overpopulation and the crowding, and the use of space because they don't have enough space for all the students, so the space isn't being used for its original purpose, because they have to multi-purpose it, because there's so many students. So, again, this seems to be coming back to a population issue at Holland Hill, which I recognize, and that is seriously an issue, but we probably need to address that sooner than two or three years from now. I mean, it sounds like it's, it's really a crisis, and so, the redistricting needs to be addressed and looked at, because we need to see how much of the population issue we can resolve using the redistricting versus how much we'll need to use with new facilities. And I think that we need to kind of park this a little bit, because a lot of the, as Mr. Fattabean called it, subjective commentary and observations are based upon this overpopulation observation, and so, if we were able to eliminate that and go back to looking at the core facilities, right, then we have to come and say, all right, then, how much money will it take to update the core facilities? Could we do both of them simultaneously? Is it possible? Do we need to stagger them slightly? Can we do them sooner rather than later? And then we have a difficult decision if we actually don't have a population issue as to which building we would do first, because, as Mr. Cullen pointed out, they're comparable, and so, that, that's not an easy decision. If we find that we can't address the population issue, well, then, that is going to take precedence over just the core facilities. But I, I find it difficult for us to put one in front of the other at this point, based on the observations that you guys are making, because we just don't have all the information without doing the full assessment of the redistricting, and therefore, I do think Mr. Fattabean's comment of, let's just leave what's there, we have a placeholder already there, we know that that's not going to be what ends up, leave it there, and we'll come back to it once we've done the assessment, and then we can have a really good feel as to what needs to be done, Holland Hill, Mill Hill, or simultaneous, or some slight overlap. But I, I kind of feel like we're going around in circles right now, arguing particularly over a point of population, which may or may be a moot point after we consider the redistricting.
Other comments from board members on this topic? Before we, there is a motion on the table, so we'll have to dispense with it in some fashion. Mrs. Maxon Connelly.
One specific point I don't want to leave out there, I don't want to make this sound like this is just some subjective, ooh, this didn't feel so good, and this one had a nice, cozier feel to it than that, and I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot, which is why I'm not using any names, but if you had been there, you would understand that point. I would also say to the point regarding the portables, that's very misleading, and Mr. Confortito referenced this. In fact, you could immediately get rid of three of the portables at Mill Hill instantaneously, in terms of, one is right now being used for storage. They do, in fact, have two computer labs, one in the media center, which is the only computer lab that Holland Hill has, plus an entire classroom, which they are using their laptops for. In addition, if you did what Holland Hill had to do, which is to subdivide one classroom into four to fill so much, well, if you asked Mill Hill to do the same, you could have another portable gone. In addition, Holland Hill is on the cusp of increasing by at least one, if not possibly two, sections next year, and any type of redistricting that you did would have to be extremely sizable, and so, and just in terms of the space deficiency argument, I think it's misleading to just go by, well, one has five portals, and one have three. If all of those were filled with general classroom activities, I would agree with Mr. Fattabean's point, but that is not the case. And so, I do think the town needs this direction from us, the town is expecting this direction from us, we know that this is not coming with any specific financial commitment, this can be changed, but I would like this direction and this school community to get this information from us and this sense of a commitment. We have heard overwhelmingly from one population of parents about how desperate the situation is in their school. I think those parents deserve a message from this board.
So, based on four board members having comments in one direction, and four board members having comments in another direction, and having eight board members here, at a prior meeting, you exhibited support for Mill Hill having priority, if I recall? You did not?
No, that was at a prior meeting.
Yeah, you may have changed your mind. Fair enough. So, therefore, the motion on the table is to approve the long-range facilities plan as it exists, and so, either the board, yes, I will get to the public, either the board decides we're going to either postpone that motion, or we're going to act on that motion and see where we go with the vote, so that you understand where we are, and so, Ms. Carnell, and then I'll go to the public.
I'd like to get away from Mill Hill and Holland Hill for one second, because we haven't even talked about the rest of this. So, I know a big topic is trying to get away from the portables, so on page 25, I'm just curious, because this doesn't make sense, year 2020 and 2021, you have portable classrooms written in, at the cost estimate, and, you know, quarter of a million dollars. Why would we write porta, I'm sorry, you know where I'm...
Yes.
Okay. Why would we write portables back in that we're spending a half hour trying to get rid of them?
It's a good question.
We get one a night, okay.
They're not for new portables. They're not for new portables. The 250,000, there's a placeholder, because some of these portables are going to reach 20, 25 years, we're going to probably need to replace the siding on them, the HVC unit, the roof, to keep them going.
Okay, may I, but I thought the whole point of all this renovation, of these projects we're talking about, and these placeholders are to do away with the portables, so...
Yes, there are, there are approximately 15 portables. Holland Hill and Mill Hill only account for half of them.
Right, and then there's sporadically...
There will still be portables remaining.
I still have to take care of the portables that will remain in the district until we can get rid of them.
Right, I think, right, Mill Hill and Holland Hill have eight combined, I think it is, and how many are in the district?
There's 15 right now.
Okay.
Yeah, Jennings has one, Sherman still has one, Transportation has one, but I still have to take care of it, I still have to maintain it.
Transportation has a portable?
Yes, they use their office.
Oh. Okay, so that's 11, I think.
It's 11.
Right, because we took Riverfields off. Correct. So, the, the point is that we won't have projects at all the elementary schools to get rid of all the portables in time, and I have to maintain them. I've got to make sure they're not leaking, siding driving on them.
Yeah, no, we don't want anybody to...
So, I put money in the long-range plan to update them.
Just in case.
Just in case.
Let's think positively, maybe we can get rid of all of them, okay.
I am.
I was upset to see by 2020, we're still talking about portables.
When I came here in 2002, we had 61 portables in the district, so we're doing pretty good.
Sixty, was the population that much higher?
61.
Was it that much higher, the enrollment?
It was, it had a lot to do with McKinley.
Yes, can I go to the public?
Yeah, please.
Members of the public, the motion on the table is to approve the long-range facilities plan that's in front of us at the moment. Do members of the public wish to come forward and comment? And then, I know, Mr. Cullen will move over, so that you can, you can comment.
I think it's still evening, yes. Good evening, Trudy Durrell, it's not morning yet, 64 Woodcrest Road. I had some remarks written, if you will, at the risk of being slightly disrespect, of bordering on disrespectful, I'm not trying to be, but it might end up sounding like that.
You'll allow me if I...
I have to say, I am a little frustrated at the circular discussions. Over and over and over, I have been, as you know, the Board of Ed, PTA representative for Holland Hill, a former PTA president, I've had two children, while one has gone through Holland Hill already, one is still currently there, and I cannot believe that we have been discussing this all year... all year, and now there's a possibility that there may not be a decision on this subject so that the parents of the community that I represent, sitting here tonight and all year, would have some kind of direction on where the Board of Ed is planning to go with this. I would like to publicly thank those Board of Ed members who did tour both schools. And I believe that if you have done that, that the case for Holland Hill has been brought into very clear, unequivocal relief. Sorry, Mr. Cullen. You've discussed and debated this non-issue ad nauseam, and now I implore you, especially those of you who saw both schools firsthand, to do the right thing when you vote. Vote to accept the renovations for Holland Hill first, and with the full scope of the initial proposed renovations, which includes the full core facility upgrades. We are not just talking about getting rid of a portable. We're talking about significant core upgrades that need to be made, whether or not redistricting is on the table. The core facilities still need to be fixed. And we need the additional classroom space so that we can eliminate those portables and have adequate space in the buildings to support the increased enrollment. The numbers that you have on the deficiencies are based on an old report, which, Mrs. Gerber, I appreciate that you brought that up. The enrollment numbers are different than they were in the 2010 report. I have brought that up several times, and we continue to have board members who mention the report that they have, despite the fact that those reports are old and that has been brought to your attention. Please, I beg you, I urge you, on behalf of the Holland Hill community, that you take a vote tonight. Please, vote tonight. And I would appreciate, I would hope that you would vote to put Holland Hill first, based on all of this discussion. But if not, so be it. But regardless, can we please have a decision? Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to come forward? Please state your name and address.
Caldon 205, Tuck Hall Lane, also a Fairfield resident, obviously. I have a children... Excuse me. I have no children at Mill Hill. I have no children at Holland Hill. So I don't have this kind of vested interest that some people here tonight might have. But I have to say, I've been to both schools several times in my many years of being a Fairfield resident, because I am a long-term resident. And I have to say that I'm so sad, so incredibly sad for the parents of Holland Hill. I know there are many who work nights who could not be here tonight to tell you this. And I know some of them who work more than one job as well. And they can't come out because they don't have care for their children. They can't come out here at night to talk to you like this. But I want to say that the parents of Holland Hill really do deserve to be treated fairly. And that project has been put off for years, years. If you go back, I know many of you started on the board four years ago, and even prior to that, we're talking about Holland Hill and their core facilities. I get the ad hoc committee. I do. I think it's a good idea, okay? But get to brass tacks with it. Don't sit there and just come up with ideas and then reinvent them and then have these circular discussions. You've got to get to brass tacks. Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
Kristina Vitale, 254 Varnhill Road. The school climate survey had a question. My school has enough space for teaching, studying, and activities. 67% of staff strongly disagreed or disagreed with that statement. 40% of staff at Holland Hill, 40% of staff disagreed or strongly disagreed. So the staff at Mill Hill is not even really disagreeing with the fact that they have enough space to do their job and to teach and provide room for kids to study and do their activities. I've been at both schools, heard this discussion. I can't even believe that a decision has not been made on this. Holland Hill's a Title I school. They're an at-risk community. You're concerned about student achievement. That school, I'm sorry, it's a Title I school. It deserves a little bit of extra care when you're looking at whether or not you are servicing and teaching those students. The fact that it is acceptable for our classrooms to be divided in four and services to be provided to students, I mean, it's beyond me that that is even something that we are considering being okay. You want to look at redistricting? Fine. All for it. Support the committee. You need members of the public, let me know. Anyone who has sat through redistricting in this town knows that's not a quick fix. I mean, you think that we might actually get funding and get the renovation done before we come up with a redistricting plan that the entire community can get behind. So I would just ask you to please vote tonight. Put Holland Hill first. It was first years ago. It got switched around. And if you haven't visited the schools, I ask that you abstain from the vote. Thank you.
Any further comments from the public on this issue? Seeing none, back to the board. Mr. Llewellyn.
I think we've got two different issues here. One is clearly which school goes first, and the second is whether or not we approve what's in front of us, which, you know, I can't get behind because it is, it's not right. I mean, the numbers on this page are not right. There should be changes made. But if we were to divide it as to which school goes first and then leave the existing plan in, that is something that could possibly occur. Because I think to throw more bad numbers after old numbers isn't going to be very beneficial if they're going to be changing. So it sounds like the consensus is that we need to do a proper analysis. But if we want to divide which school to give the communities their view as to, or to give them the comfort as to which one we think might need to go first, that might be the way to do this, rather than forcing us on a vote where it's not... Well, we'll see how it flies. But please consider that.
Well, we have a motion on the table, so we have to dispose of it one way or the other. Mr. Convertito.
The only problem with Mr. Llewellyn's approach is that Holland Hill and Mill Hill are not the only changes to this waterfall plan. You've got the $2 million in there for Fairfield Ludlow High School for the windows, okay? You've got the $2 million for the Fairfield Woods Middle School, which was moved up. So there are a number of changes on this plan, not just the Holland Hill and the Mill Hill plan. So I'd urge the board to approve the plan that's in front of us. We need to make additions or changes to the numbers at Mill Hill or Holland Hill. After we do an analysis, we can come back and amend the plan.
Let me make sure, other members of the board before I... Any other members of the board wish to comment? Any other member of the board want to comment at all, or is Mr. Llewellyn's the last comment, and then we're voting? Mr. Llewellyn?
I think the comment about the windows is, you know, we heard earlier, that's a placeholder as well. Everything in here is a placeholder. So, you know, we don't know what the EPA is going to say. We don't know what the outcome or what the cost of that, of those windows are. So it is a placeholder that's in there now. We've got a bunch of placeholders. So if we want to strip out and give, you know, the Holland Hill community the comfort that we think, you know, that that should be the next one or not, we can do that. But I think that what we're setting up here is just a bunch of placeholders. And what I don't want to do is go approving a bunch of numbers that we say, oh, we're going to come back to them. This isn't the final thing. But no, this is when it moves on to the next body. I think that we need to take ownership as opposed to taking things and just pushing them down into the next, you know, cog in the system. So, you know, depending upon how... You could put on the next motion, on the next agenda, a vote as to which school would be next, and then we don't need to be putting, you know, numbers that are not correct and are going to be adjusted.
The Fairfield Ludlow High School has been waiting for windows for how long? So...
I'm saying the $2 million is not necessarily...
So placeholder, I think, is not a correct word.
Number is a placeholder.
The number will vary because numbers always change in construction. But the relative importance of which projects come first and that are important to us, that is where this document, I think, has the most value. And therefore, putting Fairfield Ludlow windows in a certain year states a stated policy of the board that that's an important project. Or that Holland Hill should come slightly before Mill Hill is an important differentiation. It's a judgment call. The numbers will slip, as we know. They always do. Any other last comments, and then we will vote on the motion that's in front of us. Any final comments? The motion is that the Board of Education approve the long-range facilities plan per enclosure number two. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Convertito, thank you, Mr. Fadabean, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly. Did you... Was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Lou McCormick, no. Mr. Llewellyn. The plan passes seven to one. There we go. Skipping over...
As a point of clarification on that last piece, if I may, please. Could we get an updated, corrected memo to reflect the correct numbers?
It changes, changing the 5259 to a different number that's based on... This memo is based on 2010. You'd like that number to be conforming to the 2014.
It doesn't say it's based on 2010. It would imply that it is a report that is current.
And that's the change that you want.
Yeah, and the 99%. Let's get it at least accurate.
We'll make that one change for 2014.
So you want the highest enrollment, kindergarten, K through five enrollment on the 2014 report?
I would like the most updated numbers used.
Correct. Which is the 2014 report. Per board agreement by... We're skipping over the Fairfield Education Educated Professional Growth Plan. My apologies to Mrs. Leffert for staying here the whole meeting. Budget transfers. So the motion is that the Board of Education approve line item transfers for the 1415 fiscal year, as detailed in the financial statement per enclosure number four. A motion? Mr. Convertito, seconded. Mrs. Gerber? Now, there may be questions that you have, but we do, we did extend the meeting so that we might take action on this, going by that clock that Mr. Llewellyn may see, see if we can't get this done in the next seven minutes. Go ahead.
Brief overview?
The very briefest. And then questions.
Enclosure for includes the, it's a two-page financial statement, which is the financial status as of June 18th, when the packets went out. And then there's a one-page budget transfer page that has an estimated, it's a projection where we think we're going to land on June 30th. So the difference between the two, you know, we were at 595 on the 18th. We project we'll be at 380 on June 30th. And we're asking for the transfers in that second column to be approved between the major classifications. Maybe go to questions?
Okay. Discussion on the document relative to the transfers that are required to zero out the various lines and balance the budget. Any comments from this side of the room or questions? Ms. Carnell?
Thank you. I'm not sure this falls under what you asked, but I'm just trying to understand on personnel services under school substitutes. It looks like 334,0598. Has this number traditionally been miscalculated? Because that seems like a high number to be off in terms of substitutes. And maybe you don't know from year to year. I'm just curious if that's been...
No, that's consistent with what we've had the past few years, you know, since I've been here. There's no way, really, to predict when you'll need subs. You know, they're offset by the savings in salaries. If a person's on leave, you know, we have no way of projecting that. We budget their salary, and when they're not being paid, or even if they are being paid, the substitute still needs to be paid. And there's no way to budget for that any more accurately.
That's why I was just curious, if it's been sort of a repeating number that's been off in the budget, that maybe...
No, that's been about what I've seen.
No, no, I'm saying it's been a high number in the budget. It hasn't, the numbers come out where there's a greater need than what's budgeted. That's what I'm trying to say. And that's been in years prior. So maybe it's something just, when we do the budget, we should just look at. That's why I was asking. And then, just the last question, under school equipment, it's 32,651, and it says cafeteria tables. Was that all just for cafeteria tables?
Yes, the majority of it is, yes.
It's a lot of tables.
They're very expensive.
And they're expensive. Any other comments from this side? Anybody commenting or questions from this side of the room? Mr. Fadabean?
The other number here that looks larger than normal might be the electric. A $266,276 deficit. And I guess, you know, what drove the additional electrical requirements of the district, and why we have more money than budgeted in the expenses?
Remember, in the third quarter report, there were two months, we've changed providers, and there were two months, January, February, we were at market prices. So there's a price differential there. Our usage has actually gone down. It would have been a larger deficit if our usage hasn't gone down.
Was that the only question, Mr. Fadabean?
Well, I just have to question again, this school substitutes, it being a high number, 334,598, I believe. And I guess that implies, when you ever have a deficit in account, it implies that your original projections were not necessarily accurate, and that's the reason you have the deficit in the account, because your projections for the year, if they went as planned, you wouldn't have a deficit. So if something happened, it appears with substitutes to require more money than was budgeted. And I guess, do you have any insight as to what that, why you needed more substitutes than were budgeted or planned? What unusual happened? What have been occurred that required that? Do you have any comment on that or knowledge?
And while Ann is coming up, Mr. Convertito, followed by Mr. Llewellyn. Hopefully, I see your hand waving, but we do want to try and take action before we get to 11:45, which is the stated time. So perhaps if I could get Mr. Convertito's question out, Mr. Llewellyn's question out, and your question out quickly, then the staff might be able to respond to all three.
Quickly, the electric is not bid by us, right? That is bid by central purchasing? The electric?
Town.
Bid by central purchasing in the town, right? Not by us. Okay. So we get stuck with that number, whatever they...
I'm sorry?
So we get stuck with whatever number they negotiated at, right?
Right.
Is that it?
Go ahead.
Mrs. Lou McCormick, did you have a question? And then we'll address both of them at the same time.
The additional retirees number. Seems like we got a big bump unexpected, right? Are we, is this higher than normal, the number of retirees? Do we see this number of unexpected retirees every year?
No, not every year. If you remember, last year, we had a higher number than we expected, and that's the $700, $700,000 for this year, rather, this current 1415 school year. We knew in the fall that we had more than what we had expected. We had a very large number. I think we had 39.
What is it typically?
It runs between the mid-teens to around 20. It depends each year.
So we had like three or four times the normal.
We had budgeted, our final number, I think, was 18 or 19, and we had 38, 39. We did not expect that number. We had a lot of people who retired unexpectedly.
And then does that account for the substitutes?
No, that accounts for the $773 under additional retirees.
I understand that, but once they retire, do we then have to hire substitutes to replace them, or are they just retiring at the end of the year?
No, no, we hire. If someone retires, we hire.
So it's permanent hire.
So can I get the question on the substitutes addressed in whatever detail?
So there's no one event, but you'll notice under certified salaries, there's $521,000 there that was still left. That is when a teacher, as Mrs. Munsell said, goes off on a leave of absence that they're no longer paid. We almost always, I think I can say always, have a negative balance in the substitutes. It's offset by the salaries that we recoup for not paying someone who's on an unpaid leave of absence. So while the 334 looks like a big number compared to the 521 that was left in salaries, it's really not. It comes out in the wash. And as Mrs. Munsell said, it's impossible to predict exactly where we're going to be. We can't anticipate when someone is going to have a medical crisis or get pregnant and leave on a leave of absence for a while. We just can't predict those.
And so can I suggest, again, looking at the clock... And so, can I suggest, again, looking at the clock, if board members have further questions that they'd want to ask about year end, I can make sure that as part of the superintendent's report, this subject comes up so that you'll be able to continue to ask questions. But can I ask, are we ready for the motion? Are we ready for the motion as a board? Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on the budget transfer motion?
I'm sorry, just for clarity's sake, because I didn't ask any questions yet. You're going to put this on the next agenda.
If the board would like so, I will.
Well, otherwise, I'm going to ask questions, and we're not going to make it through.
Okay. Then if at your request...
And it can't be at the front of the agenda so it doesn't get bumped into September again? We haven't made it through an agenda in like three months.
I know it. Any members of the public wish to comment on this motion? Then let me answer your question, but let me get the vote recorded. All in favor of the budget transfer resolution that says the Board of Education approved the line item transfers for the 1415 fiscal year as detailed in the financial statement per enclosure number four, please raise your hand if you are in favor. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, it's unanimous. So, I'll stop counting, eight to zero. We do have a bylaw that states the order in which issues have to come up on the agenda. So, I will put this up as far as that bylaw allows me to.